Our first item is 75 Holly Hill LLC for a final site plan at 75 Holly Hill Lane. Mr. Bristol?
Good evening, Christopher Bristol, representing the applicant here. This is our second time before you with the proposed Bright Horizons Daycare Center at the garage level C, so-called, of the existing commercial building at 75 Holly Hill Lane. If you recall, this is a building where each of the garages have dedicated access. So this garage that we're talking about has one point of entry and egress. On that garage level, there is office space currently, and it's proposed at 13,000 square feet approximately will be the proposed daycare center. In connection with that, we are developing and building a playground adjacent to the building toward the south, which we submitted engineering plans that were prepared by Lenison Mead since the last go-around. DPW came back and said that they were okay for doning permits, so we'll go and clear up everything before we start the permitting process. So that was encouraging. In terms of, I'm just going by open points, in terms of traffic, there was a couple comments, one by Plan Doning Commission members and also by something that was brought up by Beta. We submitted a sort of a supplemental.
The letter from Mr. Adler.
Exactly.
And maybe he could comment on it in a bit, but go ahead.
Okay. I don't, as of this afternoon, I don't think Beta replied with anything.
No, they haven't responded as far as I know.
Correct. And those points where there was one question about the exclusive pedestrian phasing of the light, the signal at Holly Hill, and it was Putnam Avenue. And there was also a question about the traffic counts on Muskrat on Drive.
Right. The first thing was when we had called DPW and asked them about the, what was leaving and entering the transfer station, it was different from the counts that you had had, which makes, you know, it's explainable. Go ahead.
Yes, I was going to say that Mr. Adler addressed that in his report. He can speak to that if you like. In terms of the parking garage, I know there was questions about sort of configuration and circulation in the parking garage. To be clear, and I said this before, but to say it again, this isn't a sort of assembly line drop-off situation. So everyone, all the parents will park and walk their children into the space and check them in and go forward from there.
The key was that it be correctly signaledized, that there be good signs, and I think you've addressed that.
Yes. And what I was actually going to propose in terms of where we park, I should have had a pointer. But if you look at the 14 spaces that are sort of right in front of the entry, what we were going to propose was have that for, use for, pick up some drop-offs, so that when the parents get out, they can walk directly toward the building and over into the entry without sort of crossing any other aisles. So we thought that was an appropriate place to put those.
Yeah, what we raised with you at the time, and I didn't see that you answered it, so just refresh me if you did.
Yes.
What we were concerned about was that as the kids, as the parents were coming in, that where the elevators is, that there's security, that there aren't any random people using that elevator bank that's by your ingress.
Yeah, that was, one of the points was security. Correct.
Right. Well, we asked you that. I didn't see the answer.
Because, okay, well, we can address that. But what I was going to, I'll address it now. There's a check-in procedure. The parents walk their children in.
Right. But the parents do, but can somebody who is not a parent get into the area? The specific question we asked you was just can it, somebody who's not a parent, a random stranger, get into that area where the parents are coming in and they're with the kids? Is it secure from other people coming in when the kids are being dropped off? That's what we asked you last time.
The elevator provides access to the upper floor, so anyone in the building can, right now, go down there. Now, I will say this, is that, again, the proposal is for about 13,000 square feet of the floor to be used by Bright Horizons. If it goes well, they would like to expand into the rest of that floor to take up the whole floor, in which case it would be easier to install a...
What I think, as I recall, what we suggested to you is that if you didn't have a way of addressing that at this time, that your client discuss it with the police department. Chief Heavey, Chief Heavey has people who are experts at all of this, sadly enough, and especially after the Chabad incident in California. So if your people, and I don't know, Katie, how do we make sure that that happened? But we've done it before. We're out of the conversation, but your people connect with Chief Heavey, Heavey's people, and make sure that there's not a security issue for the kids.
But maybe that's something that we could, we could do sort of before we open and make sure, and have them review it. Now, I will say that's to...
No, I think you should do it before you go forward. You're not gonna, so you've got some other stuff that's open right now, so we had asked you the last time to consider to do that. We have asked the other people doing daycare unless they're very clear on their security. We've been asking them the same thing because of the incidents. We were very specific with Chabad as well, that they'd been working with. And we don't have to be in that dialogue, but we just want to make sure you have it.
Okay. I actually called the police department, and I spoke with a couple people, and they weren't, none of them could really, you know, point me in the right direction. So if you have any information...
Katie can connect you. Chief Heavey's glad to address it, because I know we've both talked to him about it.
Well, I guess what I wanted to point out, though, and this may be obvious, but as an international daycare provider, they do have policies and procedures and have analyzed these things, you know, to the nth degree. I mean, part of security and safety is paramount.
Right. We know that. It may be, but the thing is that this is an ever-evolving situation. There was another shooting in California today.
Yes.
And we know that. And we'd be foolish to not make sure people were taking every precaution. While we're talking about the kids' safety, there was a question that Mr. Fox raised at the pre, first meeting.
Yes.
Which was that daycare requires egress for every single one of the classrooms directly to the outside and not down a corridor. And he had asked you to look into that. He just went home sick. We brought it up at the meeting yesterday.
Correct.
And I didn't see a comment on it in the staff report or in your letter.
What we have, I have the project architect here who can confirm that if you like, but I actually had him double-check code compliance and licensing requirements, and I got a sign off, and he confirms that everything's correct.
We have not heard from the fire department, which is our concern in this one. They haven't given us a response yet. So that's really what we were looking for, that we were asking you for the last time, is confirmation from the fire department that it met the safety requirements.
Okay. I mean, it's, I understand that, again, the fire comments have not come back yet, I mean, like, but I did want to confirm that, we did confirm with our architect that everything should be cool.
Well, I would rather have a sign-off from the fire department, because if there's a problem, that's who's gonna have to address it, that the kids are out safety. So those two safety concerns, you also have a must-return to ARC. Could you comment on that? Because we discussed their, as you know, because you were there yesterday, we discussed their comments, and we agreed with them yesterday.
Now, what we spent, we spent a lot of time talking about with ARC was trees.
Right. Because originally you had identified what turns out to be not great trees, they're white pines, I think.
There was a confusion between spruce and white pine.
And they had been identified as hemlock, I believe, yeah.
Or henlock.
And they're actually white pines, so the ARC had concurred with you replacing them, and there's a discussion about what to replace them with. And if ARC is satisfied with that, I think, I believe that we would be. The next thing, though, is we had also asked you to, if you could dump the chain link fence and go to a solid, you're still showing a chain link. So if you would resolve that with ARC, I believe they gave you the same feedback that we did.
They, they, they didn't require a solid fence. They wanted us to look into some different fencing and provide them with a spec of what we proposed. Now, in talking to my clients about how, you know, and they design these things quite often, that the feeling is that a solid fence would be more confining than if it were to be open and landscaped.
We're thinking about safety. Again, we were asking you to do it solid so that there was no possibility of the children being on view. We have a situation of a daycare center in town where the kids are on view in a playground, and it has been a concern for them, for the outfit, not for us. So we're picking up on that. They're coming in, trying to revise their site plan, and we're picking up on that and saying the same thing to you, that the kids should not be visible when they're in the playground. Okay, you had some other comments, so we would like to get rid of, and we had commented that to you the last time, that we would like to get rid of the fence. The rest of their comments, we discussed them, as you know, yesterday, and we were in agreement. So if you could work on that and come back, was all of that done?
Which actually, it looks more, you know, it looks worse than it is, actually. There's a lot of those things that we can address. Some of them we physically can't, just because of the larynx and stuff, but I'm, I know that we can get very close and come up with a resolution.
And do you mind if I stop right now and just ask if the rest of the commission wants to jump in and have comments, or did you still want to say something in your presentation?
Let me see if there's anything else to go over. Um, there's that, there's that. Oh, there's a question about the landscaping compliance with one, Section 180, which is the landscape, landscaping between the adjacent residential zone in the back. I know it came up as a question a couple times. But I wanted to point out, for staff and everyone else too, is that, if you remember, that this parking area went through two expansions, both of which went through extensive ARC review. The last time we were before ARC, in terms of the parking, especially in that area that we're talking about, and it's not, I don't have it as part of the slide, but I pulled the paper copy, which may not be necessary if we're continuing the dialogue. But the last time we were with ARC included a planting plan in the southern portion of the property between us and the one behind us.
Yes.
So we do have a planting plan that's approved, and it's been installed according to, like I said, according to those other approvals.
Well, we'll have a...
And for those, I'm sorry, what I was gonna mention also is that the tree replacement and removal ratio we did was three to, three to one last time. So I know we had to clear out a bunch for the parking area, but we did replace a bunch of trees as well, in accordance with ARC, you know, comments and everything else. So we did, we did a lot of planting as well.
Does anybody else want to jump in? Comments?
We're gonna hear about traffic.
Yeah, we're gonna talk to Mr. Adler in a minute. So, and by the way, no, that's it. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Adler. I'll come back.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bernard Adler. I'm a...
Hello, Mr. Adler. How are you?
How are you? Registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, on behalf of Bright Horizons, the applicant. Can I answer any questions, I hope?
Go ahead.
No, I think we brought up a couple issues.
Okay.
Could you read this down?
I, I did. Unless there's something subtle in it, I'm not sure what you're looking for.
I thought there was an issue about access and egress at this point. I don't see it here, though. Probably it was cleaned up. No, I don't see it.
Well, this is the driveway that's, it's the terrace-level driveway. It's on Holly Hill. It's not on Muskrat.
Right.
It's directly opposite 644 Putnam, on the, on the other side. It's wide enough for car entering, car exit. It has sufficient parking. It has sufficient drop-off for the children. Even the comment from Beta agreed on that, and we did a whole queuing analysis to prove that the 14 spaces that are being provided would be sufficient to accommodate all the children coming in.
And I saw there wasn't a lot of impact on the lights, you know, the backup.
Right. The issue with the lights was, I guess it was a confusion, because Melissa Evans, before she left, told us that we're gonna be changing that signal, those were her words, from a exclusive pedestrian phase to a concurrent pedestrian phase. So right now, you get the east-west and north-south movements, and then they both stop, and then the pedestrians cross the street. But to make it more efficient, the town and the state have agreed to change it to the east-west movement will occur, and the pedestrians cross east-west at the same time, and similarly, crossing Putnam north-south, it would be the same thing. So we did the analysis based on what Melissa asked us to do. Beta asked us to do the analysis again with the existing conditions, and we did that, and that was the subject of this letter. And basically, it doesn't give you a better operation. It's worse, because it's less time afforded to the vehicles, but the pedestrians cross concurrently with the, with the signal.
Got it. Okay.
That was the way it worked.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have questions for Mr. Adler while he is here? No. Okay. Thank you, sir. So DPW, as of the ninth, is okay to building permit approval. Your only, the only question is really for you to finish with ARC and for you to get the fire department's sign-off on whether or not this is safe. On the landscaping, I think the easiest thing for us to do is to go back to ARC. Conservation felt that the existing, anything that's there that has done well in that environment should be left. ARC was looking to replace the scraggly thing, so we'll just make sure that ARC has the conservation comments as well, because they may not, right? Do they usually get the conservation comments?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
The ARC doesn't get the conservation.
Yeah, we should probably, when, you know, because when they're doing planting, I'm thinking when, since they're doing planting, it makes sense that they know.
Right. I mean, it's a matter of course, we have to have it certain.
And we pretty much agreed, as you heard yesterday, was where they were going on the, differentiating the ramp and the colors and...
Well, I, I, I see the point, but the, what I would say is, in terms of the ramp, colors, okay, the ramp can't be changed all that much, but what they were talking about is changing the angles to make it sort of fun and sort of whimsical, I guess. But the geometry of it is very difficult, in that there's, we have a slope, you know, we have a, we have a pretty big slope to traverse, and we only have a very narrow width to do it. So the more we change angles, the more land and area we eat up, the less room we have to have play areas, which in turn satisfies the licensing requirement. So it's a very, very difficult site. And that's why I said, most of the stuff that, you know, we can, we can deal with trees, we can deal with moving the landscape planters around, and tree protection, and all those other things, but stuff like that, there's only so much we can do, you know, just given the site concerns, you know, when we talk about shifting the ramps.
Well, if you work it out with them, and, but we wanted to ditch that fence, and we had told you that the safety issues, you're okay with DPW, it seems like the traffic is fine, but we would like you to have the comments back from fire department and have the ARC sign-off.
No.
Does anybody else have any comments? Okey-dokey.
Great.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bristol. Do I have any members from the public who wish to add something on this application? Thank you. Katie, thank you for that. No. Okay. All right, then. So with that, we'll go to our third application. Good evening, Ms. Klauberg. How would you like to do this? Do you want to do them all at the same time, or do you want to do them one by one?
Well, maybe we'll do the lot split, the lot line revision first, and then get in.
Okay. All right.
Because one leads to the other, I suppose, right?
Yeah, the thing is that, yeah, okay.
We can talk about them all, I mean...
Here's the thing. Really, we, we got hung up, that hang-up is on... Oh, yeah, I didn't do that, did I?
That's fine.
Okay. So actually, Mr. Lowe is seated for Mr. McRae, and Ms. Goss is seated for Mr. Fox tonight. Okay. The hang-up that we got into the last time, and why we had asked for the site plans to come in, was around the patio and around the cut-and-fill. So it was really, we got hung up on the development plan, but it's up to you. Let's give it a shot and talk about the subdivision first. So this is number three. It's Israel Englander and Sixth Smith Road, and this is a final coastal subdivision. And so with that, Ms. Klauberg?
Thank you.
And we'll do that one first.
Melissa Klauberg, for the record, Ivy Barnum Nomera. This application is made by Israel Englander, owner of 25 Pear Lane, and Tom Ward is trustee of the Sixth Smith Road Nominee Real Estate Trust, owner of Sixth Smith Road. We used to call this application a lot-line revision or land swap, but now we need to just confirm that we are not making a new lot or changing a subdivision. These two lots have not been part of a prior mapped subdivision, and the redrawn lot-lines will not create an additional lot. The revision will merely shift lot-lines to make it possible for the owners to develop the properties as they like, in accordance with the current zoning and building rules and regulations. The parties would like to transfer approximately 8,272 feet, square feet of property from the Smith Road property to the Pear Lane property. Both lots will remain conforming for the zone, and the two houses planned for the development of both lots will also conform to zoning. All zoning restrictions as applied to the proposed development will remain satisfied, including FAR, green space, and setbacks, except that the small pool house on the Pear Lane property will require a variance. That application is in process. If the variance is not granted, we will agree to remove that pool house. There's been no map of an approved subdivision filed on either property. The proposed revision will not result in an additional lot. So we respectfully request that you grant this lot-line revision and declare that this proposed change in the lot-lines does not establish a subdivision or re-subdivision.
On the subdivision itself, I think it's appropriate to ask you, the lot-line is moving, I'm trying to stay just with the, with the lot-line change, it's moving only to do, to accommodate the change in the driveway. Is that correct?
Well, not really. It's, it's moving to make sure that the house, the planned house will fit on both lots, and then the, let me see. So this line that was across here is moving to the north.
Mm-hmm.
And then this line here is moving a little bit to the east.
Okay.
So that, that's 7,000 square feet.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions on the lot-line revision? Okay.
There's a couple of, there's a couple of notes that the staff report says should be concluded on the plan.
Right.
About buildings to be removed, and just that tail, if you want to call it that, if, right, if that counts towards a lot area, you should probably indicate the side yard, you know, in other words, to show mathematically that that area meets the requirement in order for that area to count towards a floor area. Do you know what I'm saying?
I think it shows that it's 52 feet.
What is that showing? I don't see that.
The line is... I think that's...
Just on the subdivision plan, does it show it?
I think that, that is, this is on Rich Regan, Registered Professional Engineer.
Yes, you were here last time.
Yep.
You work for DeAndrea.
That's correct. I work with them.
And they handed you this at the last minute, and we asked you a jillion questions.
Let's see if we have a width of this. The width of this tail, so to speak, is 52 feet.
Yeah, I think if you just show that it's a combined side yard, I mean, it's just a formality, I think, you know, in the future to indicate that, yes, in fact, that area does count, because it does meet the double side yard.
I think that is part of the reason for the lot-line revision.
Right, to show that, yeah.
And that means that results in us having to go for a variance for this existing pool house here, because...
Because that's gonna remain. Well...
If we get the variance.
Okay.
See, that, that sort of, sorry, this sort of changes the dynamics of the request, though, because the commission can't act on an application that doesn't meet zoning. So are you asking us to hold this open, or asking the commission to hold this open while the variance request is made, or are you going to indicate it to be removed and then hope that a variance is requested, so you don't have to remove it?
I would, I think our position is we'd rather have it, you know, if you were so inclined to approve it tonight, and then, we do have that application filed with this only one appeals for a variance, and if that is approved, then we would, I guess, just modify the map.
So you mean the pool house is on a piece of land that has a primary structure currently, and you're proposing for it to be on a piece of property without a primary structure?
No.
It doesn't?
I think it's because with the, my understanding is that with the modificate, it was, it was complying prior to this proposal, lot change, this, this, the side yards.
I see. Okay.
Now, with this modification, the setbacks will comply.
Right.
When are you scheduled to get the...
Because you were dropping down using the large one setback.
I think it's better, Katie, if we let them get the variance.
Yeah, yeah.
It could get messy, and you're not gonna want to do anything until you have all three applications done anyway, right?
Right. So when is, because this can be extended out until the end of January, so you, you're on the ZBA's calendar?
No, not yet. So what happens if we say right now we're gonna take it out, we're gonna remove it, but later we get a variance and we'd like to put it in? Do we have to come back to you for...
The thing that is tricky is you're sort of non-compliant. I don't know, can that be worked without getting into a situation where we've approved something that's non-compliant?
Well, if it was a subdivision, you wouldn't have this problem, because that's been ruled on by the courts, if it was a subdivision. But this is, you're, you know, you're asking for a finding of not a subdivision or re-subdivision, so it's a little different. I think you should keep it open.
Okay, done. All right. So... It has in the notes that if we don't get a variance, it's coming off. So isn't that suffice?
Katie. I think we'd be more comfortable if you would keep it open for now.
Yeah, I think, yeah, note numbers, I think Melissa has a good point. It's sort of, you know, well-documented that, it says on Note 7, and I think it's referred, you know, it's referred, there's a, a note pointing to the pool house, it says, refer to, you know, accessory structure to remain, see Note 7. And then it says, the existing pool house on lot is to be, is, is supposed to remain a variance of Section 6147B shall be obtained, and that's been filed for, or the structure shall be demolished. So if we don't get it, then we demolish it, and we committed to that on the plan.
Katie, any further comments? You're still with the, and I know Levy feels the same way.
It's too separate, yeah.
Keep it open?
I mean, what does, what does the map show that you're planning to file? Can I see the map that you're actually planning to file? Because that, that's, that's a zoning location survey, that's not a lot-line revision map. So do you have a, do you have a, you know, the subdivision map? What are the notes on that?
Uh, okay.
See what I mean?
Yep.
Okay.
And it says, refer to Note 8. Note 8 says, I'm sorry to be blocking everything.
No, that's okay, because it's Katie...
The existing pool house on lot IR is to, is, is to remain. A variance of Section 6147B shall be obtained, or the, shall be demolished.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's fine, Ms. Alvin, that we've done that before, if it's on the subdivision map. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Prior to filing that, I think it would be helpful to just put that note about the, that tail, whatever you want to call that thing.
Document the width, yes.
Okay. So they've satisfied, they've got the notes on the buildings that are gonna be removed. They're, they're saying they're gonna be removed, and that would be the only, as I'm looking at it, the only other issue was the tree removal, and I, we heard, is the, has the work stopped now?
As far as, since we heard about it earlier in the week...
Yes, that is, yesterday, in fact.
Hasn't seemed to be much going on, but there was, we had word that there was more trees being moved around and planted, which, again, was requested not to happen until after this was dealt with, so...
So, and, and we had, the CEO had issued a stop-work order?
No, we had staff had directly...
Staff issued a stop-work order, and...
Spoken to the applicant, and I believe the contractor's rep or something to that effect. I don't know exactly who the, what position they are, but somebody who was on the site, and we had expressed... the site and we had expressed to them and cited the regulations about regarding site work while subdivision applications are pending.
Anybody have any comments from the commission? Any comments from the public?
I'm sorry, Katie. Just clarify, when they say it's an equilary exchange, but the changing of the line doesn't affect any of the floor area because that.
It does.
So then, did you provide?
Not the equal area, but.
The houses are going away.
But the houses are going away. They're demolishing the structures. It does.
She said they're gone.
Yeah, but it would affect, because what?
Right.
I believe that's what I saw. Okay. Any comments from the public? No. Okay, so we will close this item and is there anybody who'd like to make a motion? Okay. So we, I make the motion. I hear the commission hereby finds that this proposed exchange is neither a subdivision nor a re-subdivision, that the applicant has noted the buildings to be demolished on the plans, unless they receive a variance on the pool house, in which case it would remain. There are no outstanding comments from the staff departments at this time. And do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Okay. So now we go to your site plans and do you want to do those together or apart?
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Okay. All right, so this is going to be for 25 Pear Lane and 6th Smith Road, and both of these are final coastal site plans.
Yes, again, Melissa Clawbrug for the applicant. This application is made by Israel Englander, owner of 25 Pear Lane, sounds like I'm recording, for a final coastal site plan and by Tom Ward, his trustee of the 6th Smith Nominee Real Estate Trust, which is the owner of 6th Smith Road. Both these applications were eligible for administrative review as the lots are more than 100 feet from the coastline, but, but here we are. I first would like to start with the comments from Conservation. Ms. Mott, as Ms. Mott pointed out, the new houses are largely located over the existing footprints of the old houses. There was concern expressed about the extent of disturbance to the lots. I ask that you keep in mind that the house on 25 Pear Lane was a small cape constructed in 1961 with an attached one-car garage and a pool that was located behind the neighboring house, which likely didn't see much sun at all. I contend that the perceived extensive disturbance is due to the fact that nothing has been done on this lot in close to 60 years. We've come a long way since this house was constructed. The house on 6th Smith is not much different. It was a ranch-style home built in 1964, again, with a one-car garage. Again, nothing has been done on the lot since 64 other than the pool that was added in 91, a pool that was located behind the house. I guess it would make sense if you designed this property sight unseen. If you never went to this property, I suppose putting the pool in the backyard might make sense, especially in the 90s. However, if you go to this location, it makes perfect sense to locate the pool in the front yard, where it gets a lot of sunlight and due to the slope of the land will enable the owner to enjoy the spectacular views from the house and the pool. It's unrealistic to expect these properties to remain unchanged in light of the age of the old houses and the location of these lots. Much of the disturbance is also due to the change in the regulations, particularly the extent of the requirements of the drainage manual. The proposed development of these properties is much wiser use of the property and will take advantage of the beautiful views that make Greenwich a highly coveted place to live. If you haven't been there, it is on a rise that if properly developed can give the homeowner a nice view of the sound with a pool that gets sunlight. So concerning the tree removal that has been expressed, in fairness, Ms. Mott's review was completed prior to her receipt of a copy of the planting plan. Many of her concerns will be resolved upon completion of this planting plan. She suggested that the plan incorporate, and I quote, "a variety of native species supportive to the coastal habitat." As you can see from the planting plan that you've received, this is exactly what the plan proposes. For example, a large number of trees have been transplanted, including 20 arborvitae, two maples, one white pine, and one very large Japanese maple. Not a lot of lawn ornamental landscaping is called out in the plan. She also recommended native plant material in the rain garden, which is exactly what is called for in the plan. So the planting plan must have been completed with her recommendations anticipated, as the plan calls for relocating of existing trees, planting of more native trees, and including native plant materials. As for the DPW comments, I think you'll note that the last review by Scott Mulucci set forth a number of items that will be completed prior to zoning and building permit approval. These items are minor and can be incorporated easily prior to submission for permit approval. So we respectfully request that you grant these two site plan applications. And to quote Tony, he says, "Tell Margarita that it's a good plan." Thank you. I got a text from him about an hour ago.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any comments?
Is there a drainage, it's not approved, but is there something submitted in terms of?
To be clear, we resubmitted revised drainage report to Mr. Mulucci. And when we submitted that revised plan and the drainage reports, you know, one of those things happened where he didn't get the drainage reports. So we had to bring him quickly back down to him, and, you know, just one of those things. So he has reviewed a revised drainage report and what he came up with was basically sort of two minor comments. Because of the way the Smith Road, this is the Smith Road property is, it's not easy slowing it up from the street.
It's pretty steep.
Yeah, to, well, to collect the water and treat it over on a rain garden. So a portion, although all the, all the new impervious services on the property are getting treated, this portion of the driveway where it's getting close to Smith Road, we're proposing not to treat it because it's, we were originally proposing not to treat it. He's requesting that we do treat it and has come up with a way to put swales on either side of the driveway and treat it that way, and we are willing to do that. And then he had a comment about the Pear Lane property and thinking there's a ratio of how much, a five-to-one ratio of how much impervious you can bring into the pervious paver sort of around the pool, and he wants us to tweak that, but we can do that. So we're, we're very confident that we can address this.
There was a lot of discussion though about the runoff from one lot to the next, a significant amount. Did he comment on that at all?
I, I, I think he was just trying to make a, make clear that the drive, you know, you have a driveway and, and, you know, this driveway is on the Pear Lane property, so there's runoff from this driveway, but that's, that's sort of addressed in the driveway easement. There's no real issue with that. There's just, you know, when you have a driveway on a particular property, there's, obviously the rain's going to fall on that driveway, but there's, from an engineering point of view, that's not any issue.
I assume we're going to get this reported at some point in the near future, right?
We have it and it was given to Mr. Mulucci and he commented on it, actually over the weekend. He took time on Saturday to respond and, for the applicant, so we have it now. I think just to not argue with Mr. Regan, but just to rephrase, I mean, the drainage easement issue is because the topography is being changed where water is going a different direction. So whereas you have the right to drain onto your downhill neighbor by natural occurring situations, when you alter that, typically what the DPW asks for is to indemnify the town essentially on the drainage design so that everyone is aware that parcel A is now draining to parcel B or vice versa in perpetuity or going forward, so there's no, no surprises on that. So that's, it's allowed for trespass by design. And so that, that's the point. It's not just that the driveway is going in, although I imagine since it's in the same vicinity, you could do a combination easement documentation for access and drainage, but that's, the language of that is what the DPW was looking for, is just having it reviewed with law. It sounds like it's acceptable in concept as submitted, or as revised, I should say, because we transverse the addresses, but, so I don't think that's an issue that can't be addressed.
Okay. Talk to me about the, I don't know that we have a map, this side of the property, the Smith Road side, right? That's a pretty steep embankment, so, and you can tell by the elevation line, so what's that going to look like? I know there's the planning plan, but that's going to be kind of two pools sitting up as you drive down the road, right? They're going to be up here on a cliff, so to speak?
Well, you know, it's not that dissimilar from the existing driveway that's there. You know, keep in mind, basically what we're proposing here is the houses are essentially in the same location.
Right.
And the driveways are essentially in the same location. But just, you know, I'll just sort of, like color it up, you know, the houses have been removed now, but, you know, that's sort of, that was there, that was there, the houses were there just until a little while ago, and you have a driveway basically in the same location on the Smith Road property and on the Pear Lane property is the same location too. So in a lot of ways, this is, you know, very consistent with what's there right now. We're sort of emulating the existing condition.
Yeah, but I was asking about the pools, the new pools. If you go back to the other map, I get the driveway and the houses. I'm trying to visualize what this, the review from the Smith Road's going to look like. There are two big pools up on a hill, so to speak, right? And is that going to be like a rock face or something?
No, I don't think it's just going to look like a landscaped slope.
There's no walls, no rock walls or anything like that?
Well, the retaining wall in the front, there's a comment from the CEO, as you know, on, about that wall, and he's got to be talking, flip back over, I think it's easier on the other one.
Yeah, you can show it on the other one.
Okay, but you see where the retaining wall runs on the front of 25 Pear? He says that that, that that has to be limited to three and a half feet.
Yeah. With the heights of those walls.
Because that's actually, that's actually ends up being a great plane wall. That's what he says.
Excuse me.
Katie.
That's interesting. So only more split is saying that's a great plane wall. It wants it to be three, three and a half feet. Um, we can make it that side. I'd say it's a little bit over like five feet now, but it does not extend along.
Sorry, I just want to ask a question.
Your comment about it's only.
I'm trying to catch.
Doesn't extend along the whole face of that opposed pool.
Yeah. What's the grade elevation between the road and the edge of the pool? I mean, I, my, I can't see on this. I had a Richard Maitland problem here. It's like these lines are just way too small, an eight and a half.
I've got the big one, if you want the big one.
Where the driveway is proposed, it's elevation 53, and then the pool coping is proposed at 69. So you're talking about like a 15-foot difference.
Over how far?
Eighty feet, 75 to 80 feet.
All right, so that would be one, two, three, four, five, five, six, one, okay.
Mr. Regan, maybe it'd be helpful, what are the, if you draw a line going north-south from the pool to the other pool, what's the elevation south of the north pool in the middle of the driveway there on that line and next to the southern pool?
Okay, yeah, all right. So, and then axis line roughly, it's about 62.
But like, what are those, what's the elevation on the, next to the pool then?
So, you know, the pool, so your driveway is 62 right here, is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, and then what?
The pool, the coping elements are 69, so it's seven.
Gotcha. I think, yeah, so it sits in between two retaining walls going up, but it's not.
Yeah, see, that's the.
Like cavern-ness, I don't know if you describe it that way, but it's not, it's depressed.
It's the issue, that's the issue that Conservation has, that in order to put the pools in the front like this, you have to do so much cut and fill. The second thing is that the CEO is still, I can't tell whether he's actually comfortable now that they've grassed, instead of having it be patio on that pool.
So I did talk to the CEO about the issue. The issue that he articulated was that the development plans and the location survey had two different conflicting notes.
Different things. It's still patio in the, in the development plan and 25, and grassed in the location survey.
And speaking to Mr. DeAndrea, sorry, Rich, that you weren't there, but his call-out is reflective of the substructure substrate underneath that grassed area, so it is, is intention, or it's the design plan here that have sod and grass above that gravel system underneath it.
Right.
But it's, it's a note for the whole area, even where there isn't pavers, so it's poorly noted on this, I would say, on the site development plan.
Well, what I understood from the DeAndrea somewhere in the letter, that he wants that area for the drainage, that he needs that area for, but what I'm still having trouble with, given that they've made this, these two elevations in the pool, if they address Jody's other comment about the three and a half feet, is it all still going to work?
I, I would have to defer to the engineer about can they make the wall height, reduce that, whatever, the foot that they have to reduce there to make it, or maybe less than that.
We can do that. That's, I don't see any issue.
And what does it do to the rest of your plan?
It's.
Is there any?
It's just tweaking that.
Is there any way that you could tweak your way to making less disturbance, less cut and fill? We asked you that the last time, you remember? That was the last thing we said to you when you, when you volunteered to come talk to us the last time. I mean, that's what we kept, and to be honest, this is the, the constant question now is that people don't work with existing topography and what you do when you change topography, to the extent that we have been changing it over the years, is beginning to cost us in terms of a lot of issues such as flooding and et cetera. So do you think that you could come up with something that is somewhat less disturbance and still accomplish the objectives? That's what we were looking for.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't, you know, part of.
I said that to you, but maybe I wasn't clear.
So I don't know.
Okay, so when you move down that wall, you might be able to, are you able to make the profile lower in general?
You know, the driveway, obviously the grades of the driveway are set, that's almost a fixed thing, and we'll just have to accommodate the requests on the wall, we'll just have to adjust things with the grading there and the patio. I don't know if we, you know, Tony's very creative, as you know.
Yeah, we know that.
Something to solve that issue. I don't think that's a big hurdle.
So, but the question is, can you make it work with less cut and fill?
Um.
If we ask you, if we ask you to take another gander at this.
I can't answer that question.
Okay, so maybe.
I'll ask it a different way. The platforms that you are creating are about five times larger than the pool area itself, and it seems like there's plenty of things you can do to modify that platform in order to make it much more in keeping with the, the change in elevation, the slope. You're putting onto a very challenging site this tremendous patio area for the pools and as though the slopes weren't there, and it seems to me that it is not such, it is not such a big thing to think about how to do it otherwise. This, the house and the. Um, this, the, the, the house and the pool could be anywhere, but, uh, the way that is designed doesn't have to be here. The trick is to designing it so it's more, uh, compatible with this particular sighting. And I don't think there seems to be any real attempt to do that. So our question to you is, can't you do something which is more appropriate for this existing topography?
And to be, and that's why, this would have been administrative, to your point, Ms. Kloburg, and that's why we wanted to see it, because of the concerns raised about the disturbance and the amount of cut and fill, and that, um, because of its coastal location. Anybody else have a comment? I guess you wanna get an answer to your question first, huh? Okay.
One of the reasons why, you know, there's this ratio of, for treating the water, which is a drainage manual issue, and it's a five-to-one ratio, so we're using the, um, the area underneath the, the pool patio as a water treater, treatment element, and, you know, with, given the size of the house, I mean, it's, the ratio works out pretty good in, in sort of, um, works with patio. I just wanted to remind you, like, the, the coping elevation is 69, and I wanted to sort of, you know, when you work on a little bit of a slope side, you sort of pick the grade in the middle of what, uh, it is, and now I'm trying to see what elevation is. So this is the 70 contour running right through here. So basically, through the center, so you cut a little bit on the uphill side and you filled a little bit on the downhill side, and then I think, if we didn't have to put this rain garden in, you wouldn't see this dramatic, you know, the, the contours over here.
But I, I understand.
But we are trying to balance it.
I understand, but I'm, I'm talking about the design of it. I'm, I'm not talking about how it functions.
Yeah.
You've made it function. Now, let's talk about the design. It seems to me that there was no real attempt to consider the things that we've been talking about, because all I see are four rectangles plopped on, um, a, a site plan without any regard for its topography. Uh, you've made it fit in because that was the exercise, but there is something else here that, uh, we're concerned about. We're concerned about the neighborhood, we're concerned about, um.
The natural environment.
Well, we're concerned about this become, this being a, a bit of an outlier to other things around it. Environmentally, um, this is a very small footprint, and, uh, uh, the, the, and, and the less you disturb, probably the better. Uh, but here, I think that, just looking at it, I can come up with other ways of approaching this that are just much less of an intervention. You're creating a very large patio area around that pool that could be manipulated and changed in many different ways to suit the topography. Um, and it would be great if you wouldn't mind looking at that again and doing something about it. It would be much more interesting and charming if you did, I think.
You're not, are you, understand of location, of trying to cite the pool in that particular location?
I don't think that, I don't think that it's, uh, I understand why you did it.
Yeah.
But I don't think that that's the only way to accomplish the objectives of meeting the code.
Well, we're, we're trying to balance the code with our client's, you know, program, obviously, too, and it's, you know, it's a.
But we, we don't, we don't want, I know, but are, are we, uh, sit up here and try to do things that, like, we think that our town is special and we're trying to not make it look like other places. We wanna, uh, have applicants consider what's special about our town. And, um, I think that, um, there's something about this, this site plan, uh, which is very neutral to where, where it is. It's not site-specific, and it would be wonderful to see something that, um, pays some attention to where it is.
I guess I have to disagree just with you a little here.
Yes.
Because, um, I was out there yesterday, and, um, as you're walking up the driveway, it is, you know, you're walking up, um, and where the pool is going to be, will be, it is almost like a natural slope, because it slopes up, and then where the pool is gonna be is a little flatter, and then the house is up a little higher. So it really does work well with the land, because the house is up high, it goes down, the pool is a little bit lower, we're gonna flatten that out a bit, and then it goes a little lower to the street. So it kind of, in my humble opinion, it kind of does fit with the property, because it follows the slope.
I think it could fit better.
In that, you're saying you want this to be smaller or something?
Well, I think that the, the width of that platform is substantial and creates quite a berm, um, and it could be reduced.
Sounds like it is grass, right? Some of it, like, this is all grass here, this is.
Yes, but you still, you still have.
With a wall, though.
A, a wall and, and a berm, and I think there's, uh, no doubt that, um, the crew that you have understands what, um, other ways of looking at this, uh, there are, and, uh, what kind of tweaking you can do. And I, I think that, um, uh, this is, this is, um, certainly, um, adequate, but we're just asking a little bit more of you, that's all.
Hypothetical question. Um, you know, is it conceivable that, these are two separate applications?
Mm-hmm.
Could the commission consider approving one tonight and not, as not another? Which one are you focused on more? Is it this one that you think?
Talking about both of them.
Um.
And they work together. I think it's very hard to view them separately. One of the reasons we asked.
Yeah, I think the key question that Mr. Levy's really posing to you is, do you need this big of a platform around each pool? And if those, those platforms, patio areas were reduced by 50%, do you still have the aesthetic and, uh, livability factor that you're seeking, uh, for potential, you know, user or owner, the future owner of the property?
So, if, if I could just, no, in the, um, town drainage manual, um, on page three, it refers to how one should go about site design in conformance with the manual, and effectively states, "The initial objective of the low-impact development, site planning, and design process is to avoid disturbance of natural features. This includes identification and preservation of natural areas, minimizing the hydrologic alteration of a site is just as important as stormwater treatment for resource protection. Once sensitive resource areas and site constraints have been avoided, the next objective is to reduce the impact of land alteration by minimizing impervious areas to reduce the volume of stormwater runoff, increase groundwater recharge, and reduce pollutant loadings," and it, it goes on. But I think that's speaking to what Mr. Levy's saying, that, you know, first look at the environmental side as opposed to the engineering side. If I, which is what the manual calls for, too. So, anybody else from the commission? Mr. Lo?
No, I, I would, um, I agree. I think the takeaway here is you've got way too much, uh, non-pool decking surface. And notwithstanding the fact that Kloburg pointed out that there's natural sloping, she did mention, uh, somewhat parenthetically, that, well, we have shaded a little bit here, my roof is on yours, and then buildings up over there. That's disturbance, and that is what we're speaking to here. And so those are the two issues, I think, that need to be addressed.
Ms. Goss, Mr. Hardman?
It's Mike Fung.
If they could take it back and, and have another look at it, it would, it seems, could make a big difference for the environment.
Mr. Hardman?
Yeah, I, nothing more than what I said earlier.
Okay. Um, we would need an extension. Mr. Yaski, I believe you agree.
No, I started it to say that's a, it's a lot, particularly from Smith Road, but I think everyone's picked up on it.
And, and they've walked it, they've, I know for a fact that, maybe not everybody did, but I know for a fact that some of these people have been there. Um, there is one thing, we would need an extension from you.
Okay.
Because we're not meeting again till the 26th. Um, so if you would do that, we'll leave it open. Katie, do we have room on, on the 26th on the agenda?
Yeah.
So if you're ready, um, they'll put you on the next agenda if you can take a look at it. And I guess the message is to Mr. DeAndrea is, could he make us an even better plan? Good.
So mad.
Tell him we said good, better, best.
It would be desirable to go to the December meeting.
December 10, work for you guys?
Logically, logically, for you to make a revision, and that's, and then for us to get it through DPW, it obviously makes sense to go to the December meeting.
So, yeah, so good, better, best. Um, and if, if you've given us the extension, then we'll leave this open. And, um, my apologies to everybody, I forgot to announce all the, oh, I didn't ask for comments from the public, I'm sorry. Do we have any comments from the public? No, okay. Just Mr. Hagney looking frustrated. Um, I forgot to announce at the beginning that we've had several postponements, 32 Bruce Park Drive and 38 Bruce Park Drive, Items 6 and 7, and also Item 8, uh, which is of 0 North Horn and 11 Wanetta Road. So with that, we go to Item 9, which is 10 Lexington Avenue.
8, yes.
Yep.
6, 7 is the.
Yeah.
You're reading.
Um, they, they postponed.
6 and 7?
Uh, no.
Um, yes, 6 and 7 postponed and 8 postponed.
No, they did.
And the worst thing, it was right after I had just finished.
Rudy, I called you. I meant I called you.
You can't tell them that when you're here. You're gonna pretend you don't know. Hello, Mr. Ridberg.
How are you? Tommy fell asleep, missed it.
Rudy, how are you, man?
I thought you were just testing it out.
I see we're back in the 21st century and have TV screens and.
Yeah, but it still doesn't broadcast, okay? So don't get too hopeful.
The light's on.
Yeah, it's taping.
But nobody's home, huh?
No, well, Mr. Conway, Don Conway is here, but it's not out on the air, there's some sort of problem still.
Technology's a wonderful thing. Um, this is a property in the CGBR zone, uh, at the cor, at the, uh, south side of Lexington Avenue. Mr. Ridberg has put up a photograph, uh, it's the, uh, the building right in the center here. To the right or to the west is the bank, the First County Bank parking lot. Just to the south of that is the Boy Scouts, and there's another office building on Mason Street, uh, and to the south of this property is the Habad preschool, uh, at number 6 Lincoln, uh, that you approved, uh, last year. This is a 6,386,000-square-foot lot, uh, and what we're looking to do is, uh, remove the existing building and, uh, and build new. Uh, we are slightly smaller in terms of square footage, uh, so even though we are over what is currently permitted in the C G B zone, uh, there is a new statute that was passed a couple of years ago that allows you to retain that even though you're building new. Hence, uh, much less activity, it seems, at the Board of Appeals. Uh, we have.
Well, that's a good point.
I, I think that's part of what they're.
Yeah, that's a good point. I'll have to tell, I'll have to tell Ms. Kirkpatrick that that's the other reason she has less work.
And, and you took all the rest of it away from her.
But don't remind her of that.
Well, interestingly, we've looked at that, and that's not the reason.
That really, I don't think that that part has been true.
Because I was, I thought the same thing, and I went, look, it's like, no, that's not actually the reason. I think you're, I think you said the reason.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to mention it to her, um, because she was saying that their volume is way down.
Uh, that, that is.
So you're retaining your non-conformity.
Right, just for the floor area.
Yeah, but you had to get a coverage variance, which you got from Ms. Kirkpatrick and company.
That's true, we did.
For the ADA parking.
And that was for the ADA parking space in the front, which I, I will get to and have Mr. Ridberg go over. So, building now, first and second floor is used as offices, we're proposing to use it the same way. We have, uh, slightly less square footage associated with the, uh, office, about 169 square feet, and, um, we have a, a third-floor apartment, uh, currently, and we're going to retain, uh, the third-floor apartment. As you said, we did get the coverage variance, which, which was granted two weeks ago. Um, we reviewed the drainage, uh, with, uh, Scott Marucci earlier this week, uh, and he has given you, as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, a revised memo.
Hold on, I have to open it.
Actually, he dated it today, you received it tomorrow, according to the date stamp, but, uh, what it says is, "Resubmit prior to zoning and building permit." And, um, and that's based on the discussions that, uh, we had with him earlier this week.
Okay.
So there's no change in the use, we're having slightly less for office, slightly more for apartment, uh, and I wanted Rudy to walk through how he developed this plan, why we're doing a new building here, because I know, uh, from the briefing yesterday that that was a question.
Um, did we ask why it was a new?
No, um, not, no, I didn't think we minded at all.
I, I, I looked at my notes from the.
Your notes?
They're mine now.
He had, he had more hair.
There's more discussion about making it look residential.
That's all we wanted.
And, and, and I want Rudy to address that, because that, that was something that the client very much wanted as well, and that Rudy's been working toward.
We're not averse to it being a new building. Um, again, several of us went and looked around the neighborhood in the past, especially having a meeting on a Thursday, it gives us a little more opportunity. Um, are, it's because the neighborhood does have, it goes commercial, then it switches to residential, but it feels residential as you're driving, as you continue towards the east, which they were telling me is not east, but Lexington goes, okay. That to keep that residential feel, and that it really, in, in our minds, it came down to the landscaping, the treatment of the park, that ADA spot, because, how you handle it, how you landscape, and that it just not really be all that visible, so that the whole thing just looks like somebody put up a new house. And you're nodding, because, yeah, that's what I did, so go for it.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, can I talk to the site first?
Yes, of course.
Do we need the mic or no? I can talk loud.
Um, we're not public hearing yet, so it doesn't matter.
No, just, just raise your voice.
Yeah.
So if you look at the, in your packet, and you can see here on the drawing where we've dotted in the existing building in red.
Can everybody see it from down there?
You can have it in your, in your packet, and it's up on the wall.
Yeah, okay.
So I know a couple of the comments that you made were specifically about site and where the house was situated.
Mm-hmm.
You can see that we basically, again, have kept this building further back, even further back.
Right, then it is. You changed the setback.
You have a 10-foot setback, existing was 16.7, we're at 20-point, 20-foot 6. Then the other main body of the house also is back another six feet, and we're effectively at the back of the building where it is today.
Mm-hmm.
We need that because we have six parking spaces, restriped now to two 10-foot spaces and nine one in between, and then in between there and the back of the parking and the back of the building, we have our rear entrance to the basement, and also our, uh, two condensing units, our generator, and then we have a sloped, um, step and a grass area to get up to a little side yard.
And then we have a sloped step and a grass area to get up to a little side yard. This is a family business that's owned this since the '90s, they have a couple of wonderful dogs.
You're not gonna do that, that's a dirty trick.
We didn't put the dogs on the screen, though.
I'm telling you, that's what this is for. And you can see it's all fenced in, right now they roam all over. So we are going to fully encapsulate the whole property, surround the property with a fence, solid board fence, because we actually have people walking through the Boy Scouts and through Mason Street to cut through to get to Whole Foods. So it's a little bit of viability issue, so we're gonna do that. And this we've already brought to ARC.
Right. And we agreed with their concept, with their comments to you when we went through them yesterday, I think Mr. Hagney's aware of that, but you want to wait to get to that, right, to their comments?
We'll go back to them again, but, you know, they like the building, believe it or not, they called it a handsome building. I don't know if I've ever had a handsome building before, but...
Don't get...
I'm not, I'm just saying what Mr. Lou Contadino gave us a little credit for. However, they talked...
We'll talk to them.
...about the site, which is why I want to reference this again. We need this handicap space by code, because the building, a new building, is required.
Okay, so what we tried to work out yesterday, I don't know if you were told, we tried to work out if there was a way you could put the ADA in the back, but it seems that you have a level change, there's...
11.3%.
Yeah, and that there's really no way to...
Packet.
Yeah, and so we finally gave up that there was no way that, yeah, you could access the building. So the only way, the only way you could handle the ADA. Now, ARC wanted to get rid of that, and of course, you probably told them, you can't. What, well, I was thinking, did I stop your presentation or...
Okay.
Okay.
It's happened before.
What we were thinking you could do is do, is not have it be asphalt?
We're not doing, we're gonna do permeable pavers.
Okay, so it's gonna look residential.
We'll probably continue across, put an apron across the front, so that it gives it a more residential feel, you won't see black asphalt in your face.
Perfect. Can you do it 90-degree instead of having it?
90-degree.
Can you just...
Parking?
Yeah, the way it is, you have to come in and then make that hard right, which is almost like a K-turn, right? I mean, you go, come in, and then you've got to turn your van, if you're in a van, you've got to, you're not gonna make that curve in one swing, right?
You're gonna, well, we have, again, they're only allowing us, what, 14-foot width? We'd like, I mean, because we're trying to keep it residential.
We'll talk about that. Yeah, we'll talk about that.
We could make it wider, it would help us a little bit, we still need our 23-foot, 18-foot space, 16-foot wide.
You can't have the ADA go the other direction.
No, we need, this has to be, there's 16 feet by...
Oh, because you've only got the 16 feet, okay.
And then we have our 23-foot back.
And you've got to be 23. You need, how much width do you need on the ADA in total?
16-foot for a van accessible, that's the first one you must have. So it has to be 16 feet wide.
And your depth?
Is 18, as a normal stall.
And you don't have room to push the house back two more feet so that you could just turn straight in?
You can see where we are now, this is 10, 9, 9, 9, 10.
So, here's...
I push it back anymore, okay? I'm already far enough back as it is.
All right, so here's, here's the question.
I can't lose any parking.
We were really, you're already nonconforming for parking.
Right.
We just talked about whether you could be one more spot nonconforming and...
Amongst your committee?
We talked about that yesterday in the briefing, whether you could, you could drop a parking in the back so that you could push the house back so that you could make it lawnier in the front.
Lawnier.
Lawnier, it's a technical term.
I like that. Well, that's odd, that seems to be against what you mainly like.
We're working very hard.
In the economy of the building, we have six people in the building, we're gonna stop losing space.
Okay, all right.
We're keeping the same building, the same people. We're actually reducing an office level, but we're trying to get into the...
I realize it's not what we would normally say, but the reason we were saying it is because this is, even though this has always been a commercial use here for 20 years, because it is a residential neighborhood and we were looking for ways to keep it looking, continuing to look residential, but if you need that parking spot, you need that parking spot.
I mean, as I say now, you can go there and they'll pull, somebody else will pull in a back space here to, again, it's employees who don't leave a lot, but somebody will double park back here on certain occasions, you have to, because you wish you had one.
Well, like when the architect goes.
The architect goes or the owners.
Okay.
They show up. So the other reason, I mean, we are making this a residential feel, we are gonna have a nice little stone wall here, Craig Studer's our landscape architect, he's in California on the, that's why there are no landscape architects.
Right, I know, they're all at the ASLA.
Exactly. So we're gonna have a two-foot-high wall and a two-foot-high picket fence on top, wood residential in character to characterize the same fence we're gonna put around the property. And we have a landscape strip behind it, and we have a landscape strip on either side of the parking space. We'd like not to do arbividee and put six-foot-high arbividee there and hide the building. I mean, the building is still, if you look in the photos, in scale.
Where are you putting the wall?
That little front wall that we looked at yesterday.
Along the street? So you're gonna see a...
Just two feet high.
You'll see a two-feet-high wall with the white picket tips on top?
With a two-foot-high, so it'll be four feet total, so that it gives a little residential feel, a little gate to enter into the building. And then at the entrance over here, there's nothing, it's the entrance to the driveway.
Rudy, I've been talking to our engineer, Andrew Kusmic, about an alternative. Right now, the spaces are not the 10, 9, 9, 10. If we were to make the spaces a little narrower, that would give us the additional square footage without losing the space. This is not a parking lot where people are driving in and out as Starbucks or something like that. This is, they drive in in the morning, they park in the spot that they've been parking in for years, and in the evening, they leave. And not that we have it anymore, but there used to be non-transient spaces that were eight and a half rather than nine, and we didn't have the 10. And if the issue is, we would very much like to be able to keep those parking spaces, they are utilitarian now and they work. If we can modify that portion of the requirements a little bit so that we can add a couple of feet to the front.
Don't you think if you had three more, say, two, three, four more feet in the front?
Yes.
Wouldn't that make a big difference?
That's what he's trying to get to, now the zone is...
It gives us two feet.
Now, the zone is 10 feet, right, 10 feet?
Because right now, what is it right now?
Setback, because the zone is 10 feet. Yeah, so the zone only requires 10-foot front setback, but they've already got, the existing house is at 16 and they're going to 20. The reason I was looking for more was to have less paving in the front, because if your ADA could turn straight in to its spot, you wouldn't need as big an area for the ADA parking. And so you could reduce the overall paving and have more...
But then we'd still need a curb cut to get to the parking lot in the back.
Well, could you put the ADA space in the back and then...
No, they can't put it in the back.
But I'm just saying, if you, if you reduce the back spaces to eight and a half by 18?
The issue there, Katie, is the pitch from the back parking lot to the front...
We talked about it yesterday.
Doesn't meet the ADA requirement.
But can't you make an ADA entrance in the back? No.
No, it has to be on the ground floor, otherwise we'd have a accessibility, we'd have to...
Is there not gonna be an elevator?
Level four is just storage.
There's an elevator in the building, we're not required to provide one. It would just take, put an elevator in for 1,000 square foot floors.
Wait, hold on a second, you've got two floors of office and a residential use, you're not required...
This level is all mechanical storage and so on, that's where you'd enter.
And you're not required to put in an office, I mean, an elevator, and you're positive about that?
Yes.
You've spoken to Bill Maher?
We spoke to Peter Robinson, again, this morning.
I mean, I understand...
Not required for an elevator. We have our access at the front, which is a sloped entrance, which is what's there today. But we made it flatter, we lowered the building, and we don't, we'd have to put an elevator in the building, we're not required.
Okay, I mean, that, I would like to check into that honestly, because the law is new, 17-132 and you're in 18-36, whatever it is. And I understand your rights under that, but if you're constructing new, you would think that the building would have to be ADA compliant.
And we are doing that. It's a 10% ADA compliant.
Okay, then we'll do that.
Ground floor up here on the first floor, that's where we're providing the parking.
Okay, but someone who's, except that someone in a wheelchair can't access all floors of that building, right?
They don't have to. It's less than 3,000 square feet on the floor, it's not required to be accessible.
So even if this wasn't coming in under that act, you wouldn't have to do that? Okay, I see what you're saying. So they, so then, sorry, just backtracking a second, so you can't, you can't move around...
There's very little play then, because the ADA's gotta be in the front.
No, but I'm saying, okay, forget the elevator, there's no way to move around the uses though within the building to make it so that you can access from the back?
No, without it, we'd have to provide an elevator then, and then to get into...
Because there's a grade change.
This is, you saw the section I added?
Yeah, sure, because that's what we were looking at yesterday. But you couldn't, could you, yeah.
See, that's the problem.
I understand, yeah. So...
If you have 11%, slope from here to get up to the building, if they park here to go all the way up to the front, it doesn't mean anything.
But could you do something interior in the building outside of an elevator, short of an elevator, like a lift or something?
You'd have to do the same thing, it would be another lift that would take up space on the first floor and the lower level. We feel this is a good compromise, because it allows us to have a parking space, six parking spaces in the back. I think Tom's point about going back to five, six, nine-foot spaces really works well, because it gives us two more feet on the front for another foot of landscaping on either side of the vehicle.
Of the ADA space.
Or two more feet in the front and keep the one against the building.
Two more feet in the front.
Gives you more elbow room to pull in.
It gives you more elbow room for it to make that turn in if you give it two more feet in the front.
Make it even more lawn-y.
More lawn-y. And then what are the, what are the, I mean, they're probably not paved, but what are the size of the spaces in the back now, generally, would you say? The eight and a half by...
They're all nine.
Oh, you think they're nine, okay.
But if you're not strict, but if you measure, again, if you look at this plan here with where the building is, there's the building right now, mine with our rear door post, and there is a, there's a wooden deck that's failing in the back here that with a step going down, the parking, that's the exact spaces that are there for parking now, within a foot or so. We moved this back a little bit, this little stripe there, which is all asphalt, to be able to get two 10s at the end. But again, this is, this is not public spacing, it's everybody there, it's employees, they work there every day, occasional visitor, who's the owners, and they would come in and either take a space, or there is some street parking, there's parking on Mason.
Okay. And you're not, you're not the one that abuts, there's a, there's a property in between you and the, and whatever that is, a bank or something, right?
No.
Or you are the one next to the bank?
The bank is right next to it.
Okay.
The parking lot for First County Bank.
Okay. And then, I'm just wondering, under 162, the pooled parking, if there is an option to work something out with the bank for the handicap parking space?
I'm trying to think if the bank parking lot even has a handicap parking space.
I'm saying, you could, you could make one on the bank property though, under 1, I'm just thinking out loud, under 162.
This is back to the guy who chairs the committee on, the advisory committee on disabilities, Katie?
Yeah.
What Mr. Ginsburg always says to us is, you really want the handicap space to be right by the door.
Oh, no, it would be, that's why I was asking if it was right next to their property, it would be...
When we came in with the preschool for 6 Lincoln, we were required under the building code to have a handicap space on that parcel, since it was a separate parcel.
Yeah, and...
And even though we have a handicap space on the Habad at 75 Mason.
You can also look up the state statute 29274, that's the one that requires it to be at the level of the entrance. I think we'd have a problem, we'd have to try to get a modification from the state to be on another property.
So... Well, it might be, I mean, it might be worth it, if you look at 162, it talks about, when you have two or more distinct and separate establishments or lots, may decide to pool or group their parking facilities subject to the following, the proposed parking arrangement will reduce the number of curb cuts, improve vehicular circulation, generally enhance the appearance of the particular area.
I think it's for parking, totally not ADA requirement.
Yeah, I don't think that that satisfies the building code.
We would be punishing them to have to go to another site.
This is the parking next door, so you could put a handicap parking here.
Well, just looking at Google Maps, it looks like it's right there.
It's next to a, they'd have to go out on the sidewalk, public sidewalk, come in through the fence.
No, if they got an easement, we're just looking at it, we're just, we're just looking at Google Earth. You know what, you've got to go back to...
There's a little wall that's two feet high between this property here, right here and here, this is up higher than this gray here.
Got it.
See the wall right here?
He's not, we're not seeing it in the picture.
It's about, it looks like it's like 16 inches.
So, I'm gonna just...
16-inch wall.
It's worth looking at, it seems that if you could access it the same, it would be Show it to Katie. Katie?
16-inch curb.
Yeah, I was just looking at it.
Don't breathe her air.
Have Andrew's there? I have it too, but...
Well, I have it.
Mr. Ridberg, while you're paging through, one of the comments that ARC makes is that the screening of the side yard is solely reliant on the neighbor's existing vegetation, but you are putting a fence up.
We met with them, yes, and they said, the problem is if they take all that vegetation down, which is a lot, we don't have any room, we're at it properly, then we would put a four, five, or six-foot-high fence on the property line.
Well, you would have to anyway to meet the requirements of the zoning regulations because...
Correct.
You know, but you might as well do it now.
We are gonna...
No, no, we will be doing that.
You have to do it, I mean, your screening, and your answer to them would be, you're meeting the regulations by doing the fence now.
Exactly, we're gonna provide the fence, we're gonna stay the building, towards the property line, because we're, whatever our existing width is now, we can't diminish that for the driveway.
Right, right.
We'll pick up a five-inch fence, we'll move the building five inches, we have nine inches to deal with.
Okay.
To our proposed fence.
And then you meet Schedule C, is it? Okay.
Yeah, that, that meets the Schedule C in...
Good, okay.
Section 1678.
That part he got, yeah? Your reporter got that part? Okay. All right, Katie, what do you think about the, they're gonna go back to ARC anyway, do you wanna, you want them to explore, explore the ADA, whether you could come from the bank?
We'll make a phone call to the state again.
Not sure how great a depositor or client is with that bank, but I sure think we'll find out.
Commission, any other comments, any questions for the applicant?
There was one piece here in ARC that asked fault on the subject property, up to the property line, it's not acceptable.
Yep, I just read it to them.
Yeah, well, no, I didn't hear you finish all that, so I, it appears on one side that there is room for planning, but on the other...
There isn't.
Nothing.
On the east side, no, the driveway is right on the property line. We can move it over, as Mr. Ridberg said, about six inches and then have room to put the fence in.
And, and the fence meets our regulations, so where ARC was saying it's not acceptable that they don't have landscaping, our regulations actually give you the option to put up a fence. All they have to do is screen the use from the neighbor.
I have a question. Do you, none of the other houses on that street have pretty little two-feet stone walls with two, two-feet white pickets in the front yard, and, but you decided that that's desirable to have?
It's a nice residential feel.
You would also provide some screening for the van, but...
That's, I mean, that was part of the reason, with a stone wall and a picket fence, I had the picket fence, I mentioned.
But that's, it's gonna, I mean, and it would also make the building look shorter, but...
We want to screen the car that's in the front.
Well, I think that's what you want to do, because I don't think the fence itself will add anything to the residential feel of that street because there just aren't any fences there.
A four-foot-high stone wall fence was a bit onerous and sort of unfriendly.
Four-foot-high stone wall, yes, that's unfriendly. And I think any fence is slightly unfriendly, but I guess you need it.
But the fence is required along the side yard?
No, the front yard.
Okay.
I'm talking about the front yard.
Got it.
And we'd have it along the back, we'd have it along the, up to the Boy Scouts building. Then there's the stone wall, and then there's, there, there's our variety for screening from the Boy Scouts side. And they looked at that, and I think they felt very comfortable with it. Landscape, we're gonna go back again and just reconfirm everything.
Did, did ARC?
I'm talking about the front.
I understand, I'm with you. Front wall, two-foot-high, two-foot-high fence on top, four feet total. About five feet seems a little high.
Boy, okay, I think we better bring on, but if you decide you need it.
We can let ARC decide that too, because they're on this.
Okay.
And I think if, if they're clear, that, I think everybody's clear, we want it to look residential. And then, in the meantime, the, the major item on the, on the engineering report is just the 23-foot aisle width, and we're okay with it, so that really takes care.
Well, that, that's, that's existing.
For the driveway.
Yeah. The one thing we can't do is make.
Yeah, the major comment from DPW.
Eventually, we're driving now, we only have, again, six cars to deal with.
Mr. Ridberg, the comment from DPW, they gave you a resubmit prior to our approval, but the reason they were doing it from what I, when I look at this, is that they were, the only issue that they really have is the, the 23-foot, and that they wanted us to decide it. And we're fine with it because we agree with it being, it's what you gotta do.
Yeah.
To keep it residential. Now, they wanted to know where the refuse was?
It's been in the building, it's been on the plan.
It'll, it'll be in the building and then brought out to the street.
Right here.
Okay.
So what's that little cubby we were looking at behind?
What is that, on the, on the corner just above it, there's this outside wall or something?
On this side of the building?
No, it's up.
Here?
Right there, right there. What's that cub, no.
No, it's outside.
There, there, there.
This is just an elevated portion off there, it works with great play, but again, I know you're gonna laugh when I say it's a space for the dogs to hang out more lawn-y. It's elevated against the building.
The dog park.
Okay.
It's a pocket dog.
Yeah, Peter's been trying to figure out why you had that there. Okay. Apparently it's a pocketbook dog park.
We're getting up to the gray nets here, so they have a couple of steps, grass, couple of steps, so the dogs, it's not just a steep step. I'm serious about this. And they get up here, and this is all basically a level area, and right now they have no lawn area to go. A little bit of lawn that was there is covered by fire escapes and, and condensers and everything. So now they have a spot to go.
Right.
Got it.
It's kind of like an airport. Airports have these things now, yeah.
Exactly.
I was just curious, where ARC, they, they called it a handsome building?
They did.
Yeah, they, did they comment on the entrance at all? I mean, is that something that?
That's an architectural feature we wanted to have. We need a staircase, don't forget, they, they worked on the entire building.
Right.
So we wanted this staircase to be an element within the building that you can experience the whole way, floor to floor to floor. The apartment is typically used, they don't rent it out, it's used within the, the people that are there, so that if they have guests who come out of town, they use it quite.
Because one of the things we've heard, and like on Millbank, is there's no front door, you know, that kind of thing? And the door is off to the side, and.
But we have a little roof over there, I think it's pretty noticeable.
Yeah, and they're gonna.
Did they comment on that? I'm just curious what they said.
As I said, nope. The only thing counted out was ADA parking space and the neighbors on the side.
Oh, no, it says here, architectural details were discussed such as making the varying roof lines more compatible.
That I saw.
There was one comment from one of the gentleman, he wanted a little more pitch on the roof.
And possibly a parapet office window looks too cra, you guys worked that out with them?
I discussed that with all of them.
Okay, so that, you guys work it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have any comments from the rest of the commission? Anything else? Any comments from the public? So.
We'll come back.
And now, this one is one that we could, when is ARC meeting again? Are they at, when are you on the ARC again?
Tried to get on the, either the, what, 13th of December, what's that?
Okay, so you'd be.
But is that before or after?
I have a feeling that's after.
I think, I think it's the next day.
Yeah, because our meeting is the 10th, and I think they're, they meet the 11th that week. Do they not meet?
They meet once more. We tried to get on, we can try to get on again.
Yeah, see if you can get on, I think they meet again like the 27th, because they met the 11th.
I don't think.
I have an email in to Morrison to see if he can.
Okay.
If we could, if you could put in a good word for us so that we.
Well, we'll try.
On this one.
Okay.
And then we could come back at the December 10th meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great if you could do that, because there's really nothing, just, you know, I just want ARC to be satisfied. Okay, so we'll leave it open.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have, wait, something else?
No.
Okay, now we're opening the public hearing. And the first application in the public hearing, good evening, Mr. Haslam, is 1205 East Putnam Avenue LLC, David Rogers, for a preliminary site plan and special permit at 1205 East Putnam.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Chip Haslam from Johnson Haslam &amp; Hoogerman. For the applicant, does this microphone get a lot smaller than it used to be?
And louder.
And shorter, too.
Ours are huge.
Can we still pull it out if we have to?
We can hear you.
How did you say that if it was, it was removable?
Is this removable?
If you move it out a little further, it's a little, oh, I didn't see it.
Okay, well, I won't bother with it now, but if we need to walk around, try to figure it out then. In any event, with me tonight is Andrew Toth, who's the principal of EPA 1205 LLC. Where are you? Back there. He's the contract purchaser for the property. Rich Granoff and Eric Zambell from Granoff Architects. Charlie Mills is the engineer of the project, and Chris Grenatini, who's from Time Bond, he's the traffic consultant and, and engineer. As I think you all know, this is an application under 6-110 for a moderate income housing development, which would include 20 units for, which would meet the requirements of 6-110. We had originally had a couple meetings with the town planner, Katie, several months ago to discuss this particular site. I think you're all familiar with it. It's located between Pep Pantry and McDonald's on the Post Road in Riverside, currently occupied by a single-family house. That was, in the years, and lived in by a woman who I kiss, the house cleaner, a former partner of mine, and she was from Italy, and she lived there for, I think, over 60 years, and never went to New York City, the whole time she lived here. But in any event, I think people wondered for many years what was the history of this property and why it wasn't converted into some sort of commercial use, rather than the residential use, but I think that was just her nature. In any event.
Was the name Carvino?
I think that was right.
Yeah.
I think that's right. It was, it was Miles McDonald.
And your husband, too.
Oh, did he? Okay, yeah. So they, they liked living there.
And we always wondered what they were gonna do with the rock.
Uh-huh. Well, here we are today. So it is in the LB zone, and we discussed what we might be able to do to try to incorporate the 6-110. I think when your task force was looking at moderate income housing, this is certainly one of the properties they must have looked at because of the area here that's already been developed commercially, and significantly so. This is probably one of the few properties that had the potential for incorporating some of the features that you were looking for in 6-110. It is a through lot, it goes from the Post Road right back to Neil Lane. Neil Lane does have residences on it, it's an R6 zone in part, and it is also a cut-through. I know from the back country and the mid-country to Riverside, North Greenwich, and also people often use Neil Lane to go by, turn to Andrew's office, and to cut through it into Riverside Commons, for better or for worse, to avoid the light. We had initially thought about making it retail and residential, which is permitted in the LB zone. You can do either one or the other. In the LPR, as you know, you can't have residential on the first floor, but the LB permits it. So after our meeting with Katie, and then subsequently a workshop, which we had this July, with all the various departments, we were encouraged to consider making this residential solely and having no retail aspect on, on the property, which Andy was amenable to. I think part of our thinking in that regard, and staff's thinking, was that, to the extent that we were going to exit out onto Neil Lane, the retail would generate a lot more traffic than the residential of 20 units, and same thing is true with the Post Road, of course, too. So by getting rid of the retail aspect of it, we would cut down on the, on the amount of traffic to and from the property. Of course, it's dependent upon the kind of use, retail use you'd have, but it, it has propensity for generating a lot of traffic. So we are presenting to you the idea that having just residential on this particular property. In the workshop and discussions with the town planner, there were a couple other items that were brought up, which we tried to incorporate into the plans, in addition to making it only residential, to minimize the height. So even though you would allow us to go up to 47 and a half feet in this zone, we agreed to try to keep the building lower, and therefore we are at, the height ahead is 39 feet proposed. In addition, we could go three and a half stories, we proposed to go to three stories only, again, to try to minimize the height of the building. By doing that, eliminating the retail aspect of it, and by pushing the building down, of course, it creates more building coverage on the, on the lot than otherwise would be allowed. But you will note that, in fact, as far as the total lot coverage is concerned, we're actually only a little over what would be permitted even without the moderate income. So whereas normally would be permitted, would be 75% lot coverage, we're at 78.2%. So it's really not a huge difference between what would be permitted without the moderate and, and what we're asking for with the moderate, kind of the incentive. The setbacks are all compliant, we're not asking for any relief from them, and the other issues that we were asked to, to try to look at and maximize were the traffic flow and safety on the property. I'm not gonna address that directly now, I'll have Chris, our traffic consultant, discuss those issues, and the relationship between the Post Road and Neil Lane, and the property itself, and the flow on the property. You were also asked to try to meet the parking requirements, which we do. So with 20 units, we have 40 parking spaces, plus the two handicap. Again, if we had a retail component, ironically, say if we were at 2,000 square feet of retail, and we reduced the, the number of units to 16, we'd actually only have a parking requirement of 26 spaces versus the 40. So again, we're kind of punished for not having the, the retail feature. Excuse me.
While you're taking a break, the, the idea behind doing the retail was to reduce the height and number of stories, so that was the concept behind, right, that, that was why the suggestion was made to go residential, was to bring the, the building down in height and, and stories. So that was the, the driver behind that suggestion.
Oh, from you?
Yes.
Okay, we also considered the fact that traffic generation on the site, to and from the site, Katie, was also a consideration. But it does impact, obviously, the parking and also therefore the building coverage, the site coverage. I think those are the major issues we were asked to consider. I noticed in the, in the briefing session yesterday, you had some issues about FAR, size of the building, bulk, coverage, et cetera, but I know some question about the, the requested FAR, which is .893. We'll remind you that the Sheehill Road project, which you approved previously, was at .898 ultimately, and that the regulations provide for not up to .9, and we've had this discussion before, but .9 FAR with the incentives. I won't belabor that because you've had a discussion in detail previously, but I would point that out. And I would also point out that it's different than other sections we refer to, up to, in the 6-110, also in 6-109. I'd like at this point to introduce Rich Granoff to go through.
I'm sorry, it says, it says up to.
Under 6-110?
Yes.
I don't believe that's the case.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you why you're saying that. Because it opens by saying an increase in floor area ratio to .9, and it doesn't say up to. But then, it says up to in the last sentence. And I, I understand why that isn't clear. It is one of the reasons that we have the moratorium, because of that lack of clarity with this regulation. And we ourselves have struggled with the fact that this is worded this way, because it says, it says the incentive can be .9, and then there, you know, if, and then it goes on to say up to. But I get it, Mr. Haslam, I know it's confusing. That's why ergo moratorium. And if you look at the other incentives, they all start with a statement and then a qualifier. I'm just looking at the second one. Yeah. So we also, I totally agree with you, we struggled, in fact, I had a huge discussion with Mr. McRae at a meeting, at a hearing one night, on this very topic, where he kept pointing to the up to, and I kept pointing to the first phrase.
Well, I understood.
I get that.
That's why you're trying to do some classifications. I thought this was fairly clear.
That's why there's, that's why there's moratorium, because we had these big arguments, and we've been going both ways.
Because I think it definitely is deserving of some tweaking, because if you read that, it seems like that's a pretty clear statement.
But as Katie just said, go ahead, Katie, because you wrote this. Yeah, I mean, the other thing is, even in the first sentence where it describes the incentives below, it says that to provide incentives to include moderate income dwelling in its, the planning and zoning commission may allow the following modifications. So just inherent in there is that this is not a site plan type of scenario, this is discretionary special permit section of the regulations. So just de facto of that, I, I think it's, it's not a cut-and-dry type of thing, that's the point of the regulation, is that it's a, it's a discretionary special permit.
I don't, I see that there's room here, I think, for reconfiguring this section because of those discrepancies, but I think that's a pretty clear clarifying statement that, or declaratory statement that, that's the increase. Again, though, even under 6-17, you're allowed some discretion, special permit, so I get it. I'm just saying that I think when the task force originally wrote this, and you adopted it, it was the intention, particularly in this particular zone, I mean, the LB, there's very few lots in the LB, just a couple pockets in town, this is the largest by far, the stretch of LB. And I think it was contemplated by the task force and by you folks, when you looked at this section.
I agree with you on that, because the first and the second task force were very focused at 6-110 should be, should, would be great to have along the Post Road. So there was, there was definitely a lot of support about having 6-110 units on the Post Road. Now, the question is what works with the surrounding neighborhood, et cetera. And if you want to turn it into a 6-17 topic, it's, it's another good way of, of addressing it.
Right, and I understand you could do that.
I mean, it could also be argued another way, if you want to just go the third interpretation, that you're only allowed to go up to .9 if it's a mixed-use building, which is what the second sentence says.
But this is the LB zone.
It says the commercial floor area, you're permitted to go to the maximum floor area allowed in the underlying zone, provided, provided the remaining allowable floor area, up to .9 is devoted to residential.
I'm different with that interpretation, but it's okay. We can move on.
Yeah, let's just move on from that. Let's do the real issues.
We forgot you brought that up, though.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Katie.
Yeah, I, I'd also add, and I think as we get into this discussion, this notion that, not notion, but regulations provide up to .9 FAR, you'll hear a fair amount of comment about just what this thing looks like, how it sits with the neighborhood, the proportions, setbacks, and so forth, so you may. I wasn't at the briefing yesterday, but I certainly told Margarita, I think this section of the Post Road, that is between Exit 5 and St. Catherine's, is really, you know, it's, it's shocking how poorly it's, it's evolved.
Close your ears, sir.[1634.04]
This is an opportunity to improve this. So I think the aesthetics, proportion, the setbacks, and ultimately the size, the FAR, are all going to be, you know, heavily scrutinized.
Yeah, and I disagree with that. I think we, as a team, have looked at this, and how can we make this site really work well and be an attractive addition to the community? I would remind you that this is, unlike when you're talking about .3 FAR, jumping up to .9, this is already .5. And again, I would think the task force would have considered that when they were looking at the LB zone. I'd also like to say that, I know there's some comments from ARC and from some of the commission members yesterday, and some of the members of the public and Riverside Association, that Riverside lacks some sort of identity or character, I guess, as distinct from Old Greenwich, Cos Cob, Central Greenwich, et cetera, and that this is an opportunity for that. I think that, to your point, Mr. Hartman, I think that this particular area of the town has not been developed well over the years. And I don't think, though, that this one lot can change that and make it all of a sudden the entry to Riverside and create an identity that's not already there.
As Riverside residents, we, you know, the whole town has to start somewhere. So I think there'll, there'll be a lot of attention paid to things that, you know, you may find surprising, but perhaps not, as I said, I wasn't at the briefing yesterday.
Well, I've done several projects in this area, too.
Have an opportunity to do large-scale redevelopment in Greenwich anytime soon. We have to do everything one property at a time and one tree at a time. So if a property comes up, we try to eke the most. You've heard us.
Totally understand.
We've started eking the most we can out of every property we get now to have it contribute. You heard us. We wanted it lonier, technical term. So, okay, let's talk about the application.
I just want to make another comment regarding what Mr. Hartman said. I think that you have two sides to this project. You have Neil Lane, which is more residential. It would be nice to see how you deal with that. I don't think both sides should be the same. Anything that you can do to address the idea that, that one side is, is really a residential street, and the other side is a commercial avenue, would greatly help the project make that transition, which is what we're hoping for.
And we agree with you, and this is preliminary in part for that reason. That's why we came in in this fashion, so that we can work with you on things like that, and also with ARC on that as well.
Yeah. So one of the things that you do here, which maybe does not help you, is you have, it looks like you have four spaces in the back along Neil Lane. It might even, in that regard, I'm not saying that this is, that those four spaces might be more apt to be put in the front of the, of the project on East Putnam, where it is more commercial, just as an example.
We'd be open to that.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Levy is trying to say is that we appreciate that you're looking at this, but I'm sure you also read the ARC comments, which is, this is probably one of the least positive comments that we've gotten out of ARC. They just don't like the building in any shape and form. So, you know, it's one thing to say that you're trying to improve the look of the street and the neighborhood, but I think as an advisory committee, the ARC is coming in, and it goes on and on and on. They don't like the building, they don't like the scale, they don't like the personality, they don't like the streetscape, they want a streetscape. There's a lot of major comments we normally don't always get from ARC. So is that why Mr. Granoff is about to speak, or?
But Mr. Granoff's about to speak, so it gets me off the hot.
And I just wanted to bring that up, because I don't think it was quite balanced the way you were presenting, that, oh, well, you know, we're working, well, this is, these are pretty severe critique of the, of the site at this point in time.
Yeah, and I think Rich can address some of the things we've already adopted by what the ARC has said and what we could do with the property. But again, it's a preliminary. We're looking to work with both the commission, the ARC, in making this an attractive development that people can say, okay, it was a good job done. I mean, I did Pet Pantry right next door. I think ultimately, it's a little bit of different architecture, but people are happy with that way they came out. I haven't gone any further down.
There's a reason for that, and this building isn't exactly a pet pantry, let's put it that way.
Well, right, it's a residential.
But why would you compare that? And that's exactly what ARC is getting at, that it's not pet pantry, and I'm not sure where that comparison comes from. I got lost on that.
My point being that that was actually a project that went through various iterations as well.
Oh, I see.
Working with you folks and the ARC to get to something that everybody was happy with and could live with.
Just to cut, they, they ask for things like cross-sections, we ask for streetscapes. Those are all possible, right, I assume?
Yes. Yeah. And actually, Rich is going to talk about the street itself, and we have some comparisons of heights, et cetera. But for instance, like Pet Pantry, the idea of the height there.
Yeah, they went up.
Pet Pantry was at...
They went up, but then they didn't go up. They're not real floors, you know, they've, they've got, whatever you call that, parapet or something.
The tower with the ladder, et cetera, but with the stairs. But that's at 34 feet, 10 inches in height to the ridge line there. From the street, it looks more like 40 feet. I mean, we're talking, it's five feet lower than what we're proposing with the moderate income housing, which they don't have. So when you're looking at the other buildings on the street and talking about comparables, those other buildings don't have that moderate income feature, which we're looking to you, obviously, to give us that incentive, so.
One of the things that we certainly would like to see is, you know, the materials, details, and the roof line, and all those features that create a sense of place and what it, you know, and give it something. And this is too preliminary, so.
Exactly.
It's too preliminary.
We actually think this is quite a bit, and if Katie's idea of trying to reconfigure in the preliminary anyway, and having us come before you and ask five questions and get five responses, we've actually gone pretty far in conceptual design in this, but that doesn't mean we're not open to changing. Before we go any further, we want to get feedback from you about, no, move it further off Neil Lane, move it further off the Post Road, make it lower, make it higher, whatever it is. So that's what we're here for.
And the other thing is that, you know, you can, well, you can push the building around much, but you're going from, you know, lot line, from lot line to lot line, which also has, gives it, makes it seem rather large. But actually, really what I wanted to ask you about is, you said before that people in the past had been actually making, going through this property to avoid the light and...
No, 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 using Neil Lane.
Not this property?
No.
Okay, so you don't have that problem?
No, it's, it's a residential property with, with fences, on both sides, so you can't get through.
Oh, you're not this property, so you don't have to worry about that.
No. I mean, when I say "through lot," I mean it's between two streets, but it's not a cut-through. People use Neil Lane rather to cut through to get to Riverside Commons.
Good, okay.
Either way.
Never mind.
Right. Okay. All right. You ready to hear from Rich?
Yes.
Okay. Rich?
Thank you, councillor. Rich Granoff from Granoff Architects, representing Antutoff, the contract vendor on the property. And a little awkward here, but I'll deal with this. So I'm going to start just by, I think most people know the site, but, oops, I put it back here. There we go. So here we are, right at the entrance and exit ramp to 95, McDonald's on one side, Pet Pantry on the other. Not an easy context to work in as an architect, just, just saying. And then we have a whole host of motley buildings all along Post Road, and obviously, we have the Riverside Commons Shopping Center right there. And then to the north, we have residential neighborhood. So again, very difficult context to put what is essentially a large, a small apartment building at, at the .9 FAR that we were charged with designing to. So we know the newly reconstructed McDonald's. This is the view, you know, heading west as you get off of 95. The Pet Pantry building, which is next to us. And I do want to point out that this is a pet store with, I don't even know, it's on the second floor, is it?
It's an apartment.
With apartments above, you know, very different charge than, than we were given to do a 20-unit apartment building without any commercial, so. And then we have a whole motley crew of modern glass boxes, commercial, and we've got, you know, flat-roof buildings everywhere. We have every material known to man on this street. And we have some attempts at making an office building look like a house in the 80s or 90s, whenever that was. And then we have some recent projects that were approved by ARC and P&amp;Z, which is a commercial residential combo, glass walls.
That's the oldest state treasures, I don't know.
And roof lines, you name it, we got everything. We have flat, we have mansard, we have gables, we have flat, again. I don't know when this got approved, but that went through ARC, believe it or not. And it's, it's a hodgepodge here. You have no landscaping, you have heavy landscaping. Now, the Chase Bank, you know, to me is a nice, modern building from, again, probably the 80s or 90s, set way back on the streetscape, and, you know, unfortunately, you have a plaza that probably no one ever uses, but it's, the site was approved and it was planned at some point.
So, Mr. Granoff, I'm struggling a little bit with how you're approaching this. Just, you're saying that there's all this ugly stuff, and therefore, what?
No, I'm trying to make a point that it's a very hard context to design a building in, and my approach will explain the error.
The way you're commenting on it, it's, I'm hearing it like, whoa, you guys just did all this ugly stuff, and it, I'm puzzled that you're approaching it this way.
Well, the, the main reason I'm coming at it from this angle is the sentiment from the ARC and even the...
Our sentiment as well.
Your, your group.
We echo, I will tell you right now.
On this application, and in recent applications, is make it look residential.
Right.
And it is, it is my very strong architectural opinion that this is not a site that wants to have a house on it.
Okay.
And I understand your criticism, and I'm willing to take it, and we will redesign the building, but there's a logic, I think there's a logic to what I'm going to show you.
Yeah. And here's the thing, Mr. Granoff, I know I've told you this before, so I'm going to say it again anyway. It's what we're hearing from people in Greenwich, it's what we heard for the Plan of Conservation and Development. We just approved our draft on Tuesday, it's going to the RTM next, the beginning of December. And what people told us is that they wanted to keep that New England feel. And I know I've said it to you before, what the comment that you got from ARC, it's because they've been reading the POCD, they know what the residents are asking for. It puts, I understand that it puts an architect in a bind, because it somewhat limits your creativity, and I understand that. But our job is to serve this public, the people who live here, and this is what they're telling us they want. So I think ARC read the POCD, and I echo, I agree with what the comments that are summarized here in their minutes. So, anyway, you were saying you're working in an area that's very difficult, and I interrupted you.
And it's non-residential in feel. That, that's the point, because as you know, I design a lot of houses in town, and I consider myself a contextualist. And if I'm working on a site like, we just saw the last on 10 Lexington, absolutely it's appropriate to design a residential-looking building that's surrounded by residential-looking buildings. Where here, I have a site that's got McDonald's on one side, Pet Pantry, you know, et cetera. So the reaction is that this is the wrong place to put a housy-looking building. That's my opinion, and I know the, the public might differ, or ARC might differ, but I think if you talk to ten architects, they would tell you a house doesn't belong there.
If I read you the ARC comments, it's not in favor of the box, like, it's, I, I think they're having, they want it, and they go on to talk about more of a New England style. Anyway, please proceed.
Well, no, no, but let's keep it going. Pet Pantry is not, people seem to like that building, and it's a similar lot next door. Why do you think they like that building?
And why do you think it's not residential?
Yeah, well, I was going to go there next. Thank you, Peter. I mean, that, that doesn't exactly shout "commercial." It is, but people seem to like it. It's right next door, it's a smaller building, it's a lower building, it's not moderate income as a building, I grant you that. And you probably heard our comments yesterday, saying, is this the right location for a moderate-income housing? But that building, is this something that you don't believe fits the neighborhood either?
I think it's a decent attempt at trying to create a residential-looking structure. I have, I have issues with it architecturally, but that's not, this is not the venue, and I'm not going to criticize.
Yeah, but that's your point. Your point is that...
It's an attempt, it's an attempt.
Okay. And, and right next to it is your attempt, which I think ARC is saying is a failed attempt in terms of helping us on the residential side. So, you know, that's where we're going, and I'm sorry to be blunt about it, but...
Part of the issue is that, that's my other side, so.
Yeah, but that side...
If there was a residential-looking structure on both sides of me, there's nothing to talk about.
That's an intersection right off of an exit of 95, too, and that's been there probably longer than, well, maybe not the, the building we're looking at, but...
That's the, that's the new version.
Yeah, I wish we had a shot at that.
Why doesn't McDonald's look like a house, then?
Yeah.
No, I'm serious. I mean, you know, why didn't, why didn't the ARC make McDonald's look like a house?
I don't, I don't know if the ARC ever saw that building.
This, this was done like last year.
Yeah, they did.
Do they have authority over...
The building is...
Changing the subject doesn't matter. If we go back to Pet Pantry, I just think that you have a comp on one side, maybe you don't on the other, but I think ARC is pretty clearly saying that they just don't like the building, and here's one that sits there that people seem to like. So I'm really confused why you wouldn't have gone more in that direction than the direction you went to.
Well, we, we tried to split the difference and create what we think is a good-looking small apartment building, which is what it is, not, not a house and not a fast food restaurant. And I, I respect your opinion, I respect ARC's opinion, and we will come back with a different-looking building, because that's my obligation to my client and to the town.
Okay.
And I'll take you through the, the plans on the project, because I think it'll be the same plans and project regardless of whether it has a gable or a flat roof, or that's where we're going to go with this, with the redesign, right?
Let me ask you another question, not to belabor it, but if your client said, I have this lot, and I want to build, and I want to make it conforming to the neighborhood, would you have gone to moderate income, .9 right away? Would that have been the best, highest use of this from your perspective?
From my perspective, as a real estate developer, which is my other profession, absolutely.
But from the neighborhood perspective? If the neighbors retained you to say, we want a building here?
You know, I've done other multifamily projects in town, some more contentious than others, but what I've heard a few times is that we don't want 6110G here, Old Greenwich, we want it on the Post Road. That's what I've heard a few times.
Yeah, that's true.
And I personally think that's, that the commercial strip, which is the Post Road, is where a small apartment building should be.
It may not have to be .9, though. We can argue about whether that's up to or not up to.
That's probably a different discussion for a different day, and, you know, but my charge was, from my client, was, this is 6110G project, we're going to make 20% of the units affordable, design it to .9, Rich. And then we went to Katie, and we decided that it wouldn't be three and a half stories and have, commercial, it would be all residential and be...
Why was that, by the way? Why, why was that the, because by going up, you, a lot of the buildings you've showed have better, well, have wider setbacks and clearance. Not all of them. I mean, as you say, it's a hodgepodge.
Function of the lot and the parking and, you know, because this is 20 units, it needs 40 parking spaces. So, you know, we start with, every project starts with parking, to be honest with you. Every residential and commercial project starts with parking. It's a parking-driven environment that we're in, and that's, that's the fact of life. Anyway, so the other point about not having a gabled roof like Pet Pantry is we want to use the roof as a roof terrace, which is logical for an apartment building, so that's, that's another reason. But I, I understand your comments and fully prepared to address them at next hearing, so.
Those are buildings we don't want either.
I, I, I don't want them either. I, you know, I live here, I'm actually moving to Old Greenwich in a couple of months.
That building, that building was the non-conforming building that we were stuck with.
That was renovation? Or was it a...
Yeah, let's not go there either.
Anyway, these are, these are my neighbors I'm dealing with, so.
The point that I was making before was, when you came in with the three and a half stories, that it did seem like you had the low, you know, one-story McDonald's, or whatever you want to call that, and then one, one and a half or two Pet Pantry, and then you would have this big three and a half, or, you know, lack of a better way of putting it. So then the idea was, we'll take out the commercial so that you can lower the size of the building, so that it would kind of blend in more. So it, along that same vein, I know you haven't done any soil testing, but if you have the soil testing, you know, let's say next round, and is there a possibility of putting the parking below grade so that you could bring the building down and still have the use that you want?
Yeah, it's, it's really not feasible on this kind of site, because you need to do ramps to go down.
Right.
And it's just, it's just too tight. I'll show you the parking plan, actually, the first plan I'm going to show you is the, is the site plan.
And then there's, and that's when we discussed maybe doing something with Pet Pantry to be able to come in on the site, but that, that was a non-starter, right?
Yeah, I don't think that ever went anywhere. I think that's a challenge for our client negotiating that, so.
Just to bring that up, Katie, because you did ask me to approach the Jacobsons who own Pet Pantry, and I did, and they said they really didn't have a lot of interest, but out of respect for you, they would listen to what I had to say. So I told them, we'd like to do maybe something joint, or you wanted us to do something together, whether for traffic flow, for planting, streetscape, et cetera, and they came back and finally said, you know what, we're really happy with our site the way it is, we have no interest in doing anything. But I did look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll briefly take you through the proposed plans, and then we'll keep going. So Putnam Avenue, we've basically got, and traffic is relatively challenging for the site, and we have our traffic engineer who will, will address that. I won't, I won't talk about that in this discussion right now. So we have an entrance only off of Putnam Avenue, and we have circulation, oops, sorry about that. We've got vehicular circulation coming in, looping around, and an exit only on Putnam Avenue here. And we also are proposing an ingress and egress off of Neil Lane. And again, our traffic engineer will, will tell you why we're proposing that and why that makes sense.
Because that's a residential neighborhood there, that would be something for us to consider, and what we were discussing yesterday about it was that potentially to only use it as... And what we were discussing yesterday about it was that potentially to only use it as an emergency and not have it as part of your normal circulation, to have it close the rest of the time completely and only use it for fire and emergencies. Just because Neil Lane is stressed already. It's a small street, and it's residential. And we'll hear what your traffic guy says, but our initial reaction has been not too comfortable with the idea. Anyway, go ahead.
Completely understand that comment. And then we've got 40 parking spaces at grade. And what we have here is, the building line is here. So we've got a kind of a loading area in front of the building that would be for deliveries and moving and trash pickup, et cetera. So the building is relatively low down with a clearance on the parking so that trucks wouldn't go below the building. They would come and circle around in front. We've got residential entrance and lobby here, and a second egress here. I want to point out that at Katie's request, we are doing quite a bit of landscaping along Putnam Avenue. And on the Neil Lane side, we have a couple of very large existing trees that we're gonna keep, and we'll plant out as much as we can on this side of the property as well, along Neil Lane. We've got a row of arborvitae's along the western side here. And we have some low hedges along the eastern side here. So we're planting as much as we can.
I think you're gonna get input from that, from ARC. I think Conte and Heiner are all over that one. So they've already made comments. I think we can leave it to them for now.
Got it. Typical floor plan, right now, there are two floors with 10 units each. Eight of them are two bedrooms, and two of them are one bedrooms. That's the mix, 20 units in total. And this is the roof terrace. As you can see, we've got basically some sitting areas and, you know, hangout areas up top here. We've got some green roof and mechanical over here. And this is the elevator coming up to the roof here. So it's a, propose a shared roof for the 20 units. So this is photo montage looking east with pet pantry in front of us, our proposed building, and then McDonald's beyond. And this is a photo montage looking west, McDonald's in the foreground, our building and proposed building and pet pantry beyond over there. This is the proposed building, which first floor is the parking. And at ARC, we made, we actually made a lot of changes based on ARC's request. Not the big one of making it look more house-like, but we made quite a few changes. And one of the bigger ones is closing up the garage by having stone walls and actual garage doors. And the original scheme had it more open. And the materials palette is trying to relate to both pet pantry and McDonald's. That's where the siding, the stone, some of the details are being inspired by our neighbors, even if the roof line is not the same as pet pantry. That it? This is the scheme that ARC saw, and you can see.
Go back to the first, to the one, the other one.
This is the second iteration after ARC.
But they didn't see that one.
They have not seen this one yet. This is the revisions that we did after we presented this. And as I was saying, you can see how this is an open garage, and there's no stone at the base. And we have kind of larger-scale moves with stone infill. And then the second round, which you're looking at, has a stone base, garage doors, not as much large-scale detailing. And this is clavred siding. So it's a stone and clavred building. The materials are indigenous residential materials. It just is a, it's a flat roof scheme because we want to use the roof terrace. And it's an apartment building. It's not a house. These are the elevations, which I think you've seen in your packet. And this is the cross-section showing the heights. But overall height is 39 feet, and pretty straightforward. And I think we're gonna do our traffic.
No.
Before Mr. Granoff walks away, does anybody have any more comments for him?
I think that there's plenty of good thinking and detailing in it. But I think the composition is not what we're looking for. I don't want to be too specific, but I think that the roof line's very important. The bulk is pretty impressive, especially along fronting the street. And that would be nice to see reduced, especially, I would say, I would assume that there would be the same kind of situation on Neil Lane, which also I'm very concerned about. So I'd like to encourage you to do something to mitigate the bulk over on the residential side. I think that if there's any way to modulate the bulk, that would be nice. I would even encourage you to do some kind of tower element that helps kind of center the, create a kind of a visual, a focus to the building. Right now, it's a very broad facade. But, you know, it could be much more classically oriented that way.
Mr. Yaskin, Mr. Hardman?
Yeah, I just go back, and I don't want to necessarily repeat what I said earlier when Mr. Haslam was up here. You know, there's a natural reaction to community when there's a high-density project, particularly one that involves an incentive. And I believe very strongly that these incentives are what we need to increase moderate-income housing. But I think we have to be really careful. I applaud you for putting the slideshow up of what's on Post Road in this neighborhood because it's kind of appalling. But I think we have an opportunity, and it may take 50 years. But each piece of architecture has got to be really outstanding in my mind to put some coherence on this part of Post Road. Anyway, it's a big task. I mean, Peter's more articulate than I am architecturally. But I think we need to be, you know, very careful about this, very thoughtful. And the feedback from the ARC, I think, is spot-on in terms of getting something that feels more like New England, more like, you know, all the feedback that the P O C D reflects.
The thing that we struggled with yesterday, and I still, I really don't know what to do with, is more height, less coverage, less F A R, same F A R. That's, I don't know what it's gonna take to make this work better for us. It troubles me a little bit. Yes, Katie, I was just gonna say that it troubles me a little bit that the only real outdoor space is on the roof. But go ahead, that's a coverage issue. I was kind of struck when you see the building by itself, you know, that evokes a certain emotion. When you come back, could we, you know, without spending too much time and effort on it, but it would be helpful to kind of put that in the context of that streetscape to see, like, what does that really look like next to the McDonald's and the pet pantry, whatever, to be able to see that?
As I said, we did a photo montage, and there's the view looking east from the intersection. And that's accurate. It's a photo, it's a photograph that we inserted our computer model into.
Yeah. Do you have one coming from the, up the hill?
There you go.
Oh, okay.
So that's it, looking west.
So that actually doesn't look that much higher.
That's my personal opinion. But I'm listening to the comments. And, you know, I agree with Mr. Hardman's comments that, you know, I take my role in this community very seriously, and I get, I'm lucky enough to design a lot of buildings. I'm not convinced that the answer is making every structure on the Post Road look like a house. And I know there's differing opinions on that. But as an architect, my opinion is this is a commercial strip, and we should do handsome buildings that we're proud to drive by. And whether they're traditionally-oriented roof lines or not, I think is open to debate by the public and architects and developers and commissions.
I think that there have been some wonderfully successful schemes that have different kinds of uses, but use similar materials and similar bulk because the proportion, the proportions of windows and of entries and the bits and pieces all have a relationship to each other. On the SMU campus, they have quite a number of parking, multi-story parking structures. They're as beautiful as any building on campus. They look like those buildings. Not in that they were copies, but they, you know, the parking structures are big, massive volumes. But using the same materials and articulating them with the same kinds of openings and scaling them so that the setbacks and the, creating the same kind of streetscapes and curb views make them blend in to the landscape. So that's what we're asking you to do. I think, I appreciate what you have done. And I know that this is a preliminary, and I'm not worried about you going further with it. But I think that there's, one of the things that reduces the value of what you've done is because of all the things around it. Because the integrity of what you've done is lost on the streetscape around you. So I think that you're still working on it. I think that the modulation that you have now and that you're showing us is really about massing and not about details. And I'm just interested to see the details and how these things work. Because the articulation of it, just, I don't know what you're doing yet.
Anybody else have comments?
I just had a, was wondering if what the commission thinks about the stone and clavred materials, if we're giving them feedback on it, and how the architects, what you think about the stone and clavred materials as going with the street, mixing well with the street with the buildings on either side.
That was in direct response to ARC's comment.
Yeah, I think for the materials, I would pretty much let ARC run with that.
And we won't give them any direction? Okay.
I mean, I'm supportive of what they're trying to achieve. What I still don't quite understand is what New Englandy means to them. But hopefully, that'll become clearer. Mr. Lowe, did you want to add anything?
I've put on a new architectural hat to make, if I can hazard a few comments. To me, this building has an industrial look.
Right.
And that the roof line, if I were, you know, to critique it, needs some softening of some, and I appreciate you're trying to maintain a roof garden. And I just wonder whether there are, and this gets well above my pay grade, are there features or motifs you can add along the cornices? Is that what they're going, anyway, along the top of the building that might soften the appearance? That whole flat, the whole flatness of it is a little bit of, kind of in-your-face as you, one views it. There's no, there's not much breaking up visually of it. So, and I would, also, I'm surprised to hear that you would want to pick up anything architecturally from the building to the east. And who knows how long that building is gonna be there? But I don't, I don't know that we want to model McDonald's. The last question, is there some way to provide any parking at a level underground without, just a partial underground park?
You asked that, didn't you, Katie, before?
Yeah, not maybe full way, but just a little bit.
Right, I didn't hear that, if you did.
The response was, it's a challenging site to.
No, I understand, but I wanted.
But it doesn't mean we can't, you know, gradually.
Not to put the whole thing down, but you might pick up the incremental space that would provide the freedom to do some of the things we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a slight bowl of a property now, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, so if you just bowl it slightly more.
Yeah, there's a number of challenges, but I'm not, I'm saying, we'll absolutely look at that possibility of lowering the grade.
Okay, so what's that?
Traffic.
Okay.
Which is, we think is important, right?
Good evening. My name is Chris Granatini. I'm a State of Connecticut licensed professional engineer. I work for Time Bond from Shelton, Connecticut. So we did perform a traffic study based on the proposed development. What's shown on the first slide are the study area intersections. So we looked at the intersection with I-95 and East Putnam Avenue and Neil Lane. We looked at the proposed site intersections with East Putnam Avenue in front of the site and on Neil Lane. And we also looked at the existing uncontrolled intersection of Neil Lane to the west of the site. And that's all related to how traffic would access this facility in the future. I just want to talk about, basically, how the site would be accessed based on the proposed available circulation. So on the figure, if you're traveling, so we'll start, and we'll head west, and then I'll talk about it to the eastbound direction. So if you're to the east of the site on East Putnam Avenue, and you're traveling in front of Riverside Commons, and you want to get into this site, you've got two options the way it's designed today. You can turn right into the driveway on East Putnam Avenue, as shown, the one-way-in driveway here. Or you could take a right and go back to Neil Lane and come in from the rear of the site. So that's how you would get into the site from the east. From the west, because of the presence of the raised median on East Putnam Avenue, your only option to get into the site from the west, which is over here, is to take a left from East Putnam Avenue onto Neil Lane, come up, circulate around, and come into the rear of the site. So you don't have access to turn left from East Putnam Avenue into the site because of the median on East Putnam Avenue today. So you essentially have, your only ability to get into the site is from the rear of the site. And that's why the driveway is there, because of maintaining access to the site.
But you can go up to the intersection and turn, I'm lost. Can't you go to the light? There's a turn, a left-hand turn there to get into the shopping center.
Okay, and so once you, once you come to the shopping center and turn left, then where do you go?
You make a U-turn, like everybody else does.
I guess we don't view that as a safe operation to make a U-turn.
We don't view Neil Lane, we don't view using Neil Lane as a safe operation either. That's what I started out saying.
But I don't think you make, I don't think you make a U-turn. You go into.
Yeah, you can turn inside.
If we're going to enter Riverside Commons, you make a U-turn there.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you want to access, I mean. If you want to access, I mean, we don't view, we did say that earlier, that says narrow residential street, I would not want to add this kind of traffic to it.
So before, so let's talk about what this type of site would generate. So when we talk about traffic impacts, you guys all know, we look at what the site generates in the peak hour, what the impact of the development is. A 20-unit residential low-rise apartment building generates 10 cars in the morning and 14 cars in the afternoon and 14 cars on a Saturday in the peak hour. And that's based on standard of practice in the industry of how we forecast what a site generates. So to talk about the site generating a lot of traffic, I think is, does it an injustice because it really doesn't generate a lot of peak hour trips? And on top of that, there is transit service right on East Putnam Avenue that has a stop directly almost in front of the building and it provides service to Greenwich Train Station and Port Cecilia Train Station. So we do have a transit element that could service this facility, that would get people that want to live here and commute, it would provide them another alternative to getting in their car and driving from the site. So when I look at this site and I say that it's going to generate 10 cars in the morning and only a handful of those cars are going to actually use Neil Lane to go out to get to I-95 and then the rest of them can take a right out of the site to head west on East Putnam Avenue, we're starting to talk about, you know, one car every four or five minutes on Neil Lane, which is carrying over 120 cars in the morning and 120 cars in the afternoon. So.
So it's like a 10%.
It's a very incremental.
It's like a 10% increase for Neil Lane, you said 120 cars in the morning total for Neil Lane.
We're adding six.
You said in a segment.
I said the whole site would generate 10 cars in the morning, but only six would have to use Neil Lane to go out. So, you know, we're talking about a very.
A 5% increase.
Very small percentage.
And that's on your estimate at the moment of what the trips would be and you're assuming some public transportation.
Well, we didn't take any credit for public transportation. So we took a very conservative analysis and said that the 20 units will generate this many trips without taking a transit credit.
So you have 20 units and only 12 of them go to work in the morning? No, this was not, I'm sorry, ignore the, ignore the public. I'm asking you a question, you're assuming that.
I'm assuming that in the peak hour, now I'm not saying that, I mean.
In your peak hour, you calculated.
I go to work at 6:30 in the morning, so.
Or you're outside of peak.
So I wouldn't impact the peak hour and that's, you know, that's, you have to look at when a site would actually have an impact.
And so you're estimating that at peak, you would only get six and that people would leave before and after the peak?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the one thing I think you're aware of is that on a proposal like this where it's a multifamily and the driveway is in a residential neighborhood, it's our discretion, we don't automatically, our regulations don't automatically, don't allow for that to occur. We would have to say it's okay.
Understood.
Okay, so we're very hesitant.
I just want to, I just want to comment on though the premise that, that it may be deemed safer to turn left at the signal and then perform, what I'm, if I understand correctly, is that you would recommend performing a U-turn essentially at the intersection of Neil Lane and the Riverside Commons versus.
Well, you have an interesting problem there because that is a public, you'd have to figure it out for what is legal for you to do for that approach so that you can create a right-hand access into your property. I don't know, I mean, yes, you're right, what I know everybody does in town may not be legal. And I can't recommend to you that you do something illegal, you know I can't, so.
All I'm saying, what I'm saying is that our recommendation is to do something safe, which is to take a left turn into a public street and use the public roadway network to get into, you know, a driveway in the back of the site. That's, that's the safest access is to take a right turn to the site versus doing something.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hardman?
No, I just going to say, in the scheme of this entire development, maybe access to Neil Lane makes sense if other things were done to sort of address some of our concerns about massing and proportion and setback. So from my standpoint, I think it's, you know, a bundle of sticks here and, you know, this is one of them that.
Okay, I hear you. This person's opinion here is, I would be, I would object to it. So, go ahead.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Because I'm confused, which is probably, don't say anything. The U-turn, I'm lost.
Excuse me, you don't even have to talk.
If you, if you, I was, I don't have a problem with the traffic flow. I don't think it's a huge amount of new traffic, I get it, but you got Neil Lane to deal with. But if you're coming east on the Post Road, you're going without turn and it goes left, right? Why are we making a U-turn? Isn't that, you just come in the same way you would come from the other side, right? Am I missing?
No, but you can either take Neil Lane or you can take the left at the shopping center and go in through the rear of the property.
There's two entrances to this and I don't understand what the point was that there was only one way in.
That was not my point.
You can't turn from the Post Road left, or you can take Neil Lane.
I think the comment that was made by somebody on the commission was that, how, if you're coming from the west and you're trying to enter into the site, how do you do that without going on Neil Lane?
That I understand.
That, I thought, I think that was what the point was being made.
But there's still two entrances exactly the same way.
Or the question being asked, excuse me. I guess I'm not, I'm not hearing what you're really asking me and I can give an answer if I knew what I was being asked.
You said there was only one lane way in coming from the west.
Correct.
And I tried to say, well, couldn't you go up to the light, turn left because there's a turn lane and come in Neil Lane, that would be the other way in.
As an alternative, but, but as a driver, would you drive up and wait at a signal to take a left turn at a signal if you could just?
Probably not.
So that was, my point was that that's how people would generally access the site, would be to use, use the west leg of Neil Lane, which is available, and come in the site from the back. If there's a driveway on Neil Lane, it's their, you know, it's their personal preference to do which either of those they want to do. They could sit in the left turn lane in traffic and wait at the light and take a left and then go up here and take a left onto Neil and come in this way, or they can just take a left at an uncontrolled intersection where they are turning left onto a street that will take them to the same destination much more readily.
I don't want to go on, but there is two ways in, and by the way, why wouldn't they turn back there? Because the road's totally blocked half the time. You can't get across.
There is, there are people now coming up from the west who turn into the neighbors, into Pet Pantry, heading west to east, is that correct? And there's no barrier in front of this site, is there, or is there?
There is a barrier in front of our site.
Got it, thank you.
It does not extend though, Mr. Lowe, to Pet Pantry, it does.
No, I know it doesn't because I turned there.
Right. This site is the one that, this site and McDonald's are the two sites that are precluded from making the left.
Got it, thank you.
But why did you say, yeah, okay, never mind.
Neil Lane wide enough for two cars to, I was just down there yesterday, is it, it seemed like really narrow for two cars to pass each other on Neil Lane.
I mean, it's an existing two-way street today.
But, no, part of it is not, right? Part of it is one-way.
Not this part.
The entrance off of the Post Road, I believe, is one-way, is it not?
Correct.
Which extends all the way up until you were going to take that right.
Correct.
Okay.
I just would like to say something. I think it is plausible that you could actually be going eastbound on, on East Putnam and access this site from the west corner and change the traffic pattern so that the entrance would be on the west side and you exit on the east side. Because I'm looking at the, at Google Earth and it seems like that is a plausible thing to do if turning from, if you're looking for a turn from, coming from the west.
If you look closely at Google Earth, you'll notice that the raised island terminates about halfway through the property and just to the west of the raised island is a, is a median that has a double yellow center line on both sides of it separated. And that is essentially DOT telling the drivers that it's illegal movement to cross over that area.
Actually, it works in your benefit, excuse me, it works in your benefit that that widening is there. So I think that that's something you should explore. I think that's a good solution to this and, because what you're proposing is not a good solution.
Can you, I guess, I'm sorry, can you just, I guess I'm not totally clear as to what, what you were recommending or suggesting that we investigate.
So, there is a widening of the road at this point. There is no median there, it's just the, there's a double yellow line that starts widening. That gives people who are turning, if they were to turn, more room.
An extra lane turning up here.
From the traffic to actually make that left turn and be out of the, out of the way of the traffic moving eastward.
So I would just offer that, I believe that that area is, number one, it's too narrow and number two, the way that DOT has striped that road, if you look closely, there's two sets of double yellow center lines on either side of the median.
That's exactly the point.
So that.
That is exactly the point.
Okay.
There is a widening of the road there.
Let's.
So the question I have is, is this something that can be explored with the DOT so that they can.
They're not going to want it. That's my guess, right? They're not going to want.
Actually accommodate.
DOT is not going to want.
Turning at that point.
The DOT is not going to want people turning across. I mean, that's an issue. So, what else for, you did your traffic counts on Neil, I don't remember when you did them, I'm sorry.
We did them last May and June before school was out.
Okay. And you did them on, on what days of the week, do you remember? I don't have the report with me, I'm sorry.
We counted Saturday midday and we counted, I believe we counted Friday afternoon and a weekday morning.
Okay. All right, okay, thank you. Mr. Haslam? I was thinking of going to the public for comment now, if that's acceptable to you.
I just said I want to make a couple of comments about the traffic because I'm not a traffic expert, but I am very familiar with this particular area.
I know you are.
And the way it moves. And I have a suggestion maybe too, and I'm not sure it works, but it just occurred to me.
You are an attorney, you know that, right?
So, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of people, including myself, will come down the Post Road and when they want to get into Riverside Commons to avoid this light here, they'll turn up here, which is one-way here.
Right.
Okay, to Mr. Lowe's point.
Say hello to Mr. D.
And then it becomes two-way here.
Right, we know that.
Now, the area up here, whoops.
Okay. Okay, you got to go back to the one and you got to stop moving the slides and then if you step to one side, because as my mother would say, you make a better door than a window.
Okay, there's, I'm sorry, which side do you want me to get to?
Now you.
Anyway, well, everybody, if you're coming down Perna Lane from the top, that's another way. I come from outstanding which road and a lot of people from the back country and the mid-country.
We come down, if I go to the back country and I'm, yeah.
Then I go down Perna and then I cut across to there and then I go to Old Greenwich to play tennis and do things down there, okay? And a lot of people do that as well. So Neil Lane is heavily trafficked in this area.
That's the neighbors' concern.
No, so here's my suggestion.
Okay.
One of the things, if you said, then don't have any exit out into Neil Lane, you have to exit from the site. You cannot exit from the site and go east, you have to exit from the site and go west. And what are people going to do when they do that? If they're going east, they're going to exit west, they're going to go down to the Neil Lane intersection and then they're going to get on Neil Lane and they're going to go right out to Neil Lane, back to the intersection again. That's what they're going to do.
Yeah.
So it makes no sense to do that.
I hear you.
Whereas if you allow them to go out the back, they are going to then make a right-hand turn and go directly to the intersection. So there'll be less traffic on that leg of Neil Lane altogether. Now let me make a suggestion that may be something that the neighbors who have concerns, understandably, might consider and maybe B W would consider too, which is.
I agree.
And again, I may be missing something, but.
No, I think you've got a good idea of what you're about to say.
But if you make Neil Lane one-way, the other way.
I was just, I knew you were going to say that.
Pass DeAndrea's office to the Post Road, all right? And then what you do is you make it one-way also going the other way towards Perna.
No, keep it, you're not having it in two directions, right? You're thinking, could we ask to have it be one-way all around?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that way.
And that way, if people exit the building, they're skipping, there's no way, well, when they, and it's only exit from the building, how are you going to enforce that?
Well, just make it a one-way, like you do with any one-way streets.
The problem is, how do you get into the building when you're coming from the west?
You come from the west and you go down to the intersection as you were suggesting and make that left-hand turn and come in the back of Neil Lane.
Yeah, but to your point, oh, so you're going to have it go.
The other way.
The other way, but then everybody's going to turn left when they leave, oh.
No, they come back out to the front, then if they want to go west, they can exit out the front, and if they want to go east, they go back to the intersection and you cut down a lot of traffic, not just from this apartment building, which is a relatively small amount of traffic, but also from people such as myself, cutting to go play tennis in Old Greenwich or cutting to go to Riverside Commons, coming from the back country and the mid-country. Because they're now going to be going down past DeAndrea's office to the intersection, past all commercial buildings, not residential at that point.
So you want it to go like this.
Exactly. And I'm just throwing it out there because I think it might be a good way of curing the problem and actually cutting back on the traffic for the folks that are here tonight that live on Neil Lane.
Okay.
So I throw it out there for what it's worth.
I don't disagree with the assumption, I think the issue, and I will leave it to the traffic engineer to support that or not, is that you're putting people into a left-hand turn scenario coming out of Neil now. So let's say now you're the reverse in front of Mr. DeAndrea's office and now they're making a left.
The landmark that it is.
There'll be an inducement there for somebody to make a left onto West Putnam Avenue, crossing traffic, whereas now the inducement is at the light to do that. You know, you're making those left-hand turns.
Right.
So that, I just.
Maybe if you do.
Having read a few reports of my time and traffic flow analysis, that, that's probably going to be the operation that's least, this has been set up, if you look at it, probably to avoid that.
But what about Pat, if you do what you do at Taylor Drive, for instance, behind Cosgob's C V S, where you, you cut off Neil Lane so the people that live there can go in and out to the intersection, east and west, two-way, but nobody else can cut through there anymore. It might, it might be helpful, I'm throwing it out for what it's worth.
As is the issue with most traffic concerns is that people want to be able to drive through their neighborhood, but they don't want other people to be able to do that.
Right.
So it's how do we, how do we weigh those?
And I think that could cure the issues and leave the need for us to have to exit out of Neil Lane.
We'll ask people to look at it and, okay, would you ever go to public comment?
Yes.
Because the night is wearing on now.
That's fine.
We still have quite a bit of, okay. So does anyone from the public wish to speak? Hello, sir?
Shall I approach or should I just?
No, you should come up and you have to say what your name is if you remember.
I know, I'm not that sleepy. My name is Bob Forstbauer, I live at 24 Neil Lane. An image that you didn't see tonight in any of the architectural drawings. My house is not motley, it's brand new. My wife and I just built it two years ago and we spent our life savings on this house. You know, funny thing, when this hearing started on 1205 East Putnam, there was a comment about a woman who lived there for 65 years in the house that we want to now build a 20-unit apartment building in. She never went to New York City. It's funny that they're trying to build New York City now on her property, you know, and that's something you got to think about. There's an old saying, okay, and I'm going to be polite with the saying, but I think you guys can read through the lines. There's a bag that holds 10 pounds of food and you have 20 pounds in it.
We say it with potatoes.
This project is way too big, right? Potatoes, food.
We do this all the time, that's what we tell people all the time, you're trying to put 20 pounds of potatoes into a tin pen, it's one of our favorite expressions.
It's too much, I mean, it's going to affect the neighborhood in such an adverse way. It's going to affect the property values in an adverse way. When I built that house, you guys were interested in a New England look. Well, we actually sat down with Tim Peck and designed a house with a New England look. And when we designed the house, we designed it so that we knocked the house that was down there, which was a motley house, that I'll have to agree with, and we built a beautiful home with our life savings. We enhanced the neighborhood and the value that comes along with it, and so have several other people in that Westcott, Hoover, Neil Lane area, okay? We all did it and that properties, all these properties are starting to turn around. And now you're going to put 20 units, which, I don't know, a normal household in Grand And now you're going to put 20 units, which, I don't know, a normal household in Greenwich, you know, if it's, I don't know, half of it's two bedrooms, maybe one bedrooms, but most households have two cars. So you're going to have 40 cars in this apartment complex. What about company? Everybody has parties, people invite their parents over. Are we accommodating for that? I didn't hear anything about it. There's 54 houses on the Neal Lane, Westcott, and Hoover area. You're going to increase that, the amount of households in that area by 38% on a .6-acre property? Come on, huh? I mean, look, build a beautiful four-town homes, but 20 apartment buildings? I think it's an overkill, and I think it should be really looked at, you know? You're going to affect, and again, you saw pictures tonight of the front. The consideration should be in the back. And I live directly across from that property. Now, I'm not a traffic guru, but I have firsthand knowledge of the traffic there. Whether you're there at 6:00 in the morning, at 12:00 in the afternoon, at 5:00 at night, with the McDonald's there and the traffic being blocked, it is a disaster. Add another 40 cars, 40 cars at a minimum, all right? I don't know how many people live their wife's home these days and go to work so they only use one car. I, you know, I'm just, I'm baffled by that. I would think that those cars all leave, go to work, they all come back, so between the hours of 7:00, let's say 9:00, you're going to have a huge traffic problem there. And the same thing from 5:00 to 6:00, when everybody comes home. You have children that play in that area. My wife and my daughter walk our dogs up and down Neal Lane. You know, I didn't buy this house and build it and spend my life savings to have it dwarfed by a monolithic apartment building.
Okay.
So, you know, I just want to say that. Now, I guess as this continues to go on, there'll be more hearings. I've never had to deal with anything like this before, but, you know, I trust that you guys are going to look at the best interest of everybody that's in that neighborhood, as well as the prospective building, all right? There's no reason why he can't build what he wants, but he has to be considerate of others. And Neal Lane should not be an exit or entrance for any property, any building that's built on 1205. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else?
I'm Judy Forstbauer. Sure.
Okay. Ma'am, yeah, and just when you get up here, identify yourself for the court reporter. No, no, he has to hear you.
So, okay, I'm Judy Forstbauer, I'm Bob Forstbauer's wife.
Can you spell it for him?
And I just wanted to build on something my husband just said, which is, the neighborhood is getting revitalized, the Neal Lane neighborhood is getting revitalized. We have a mix of moderate-income houses and new houses that are going up. It's starting to look really nice. You know, little houses go up for sale, people are either fixing them or taking them down and building something new there. That's great for Greenwich, it's great for Riverside, that's what we want. But if you put this in our neighborhood, people are going to be reluctant to buy there. I know that I wouldn't. If I drove down that, if that piece of property were for sale while I was looking, and there were a 20-unit apartment building across in my neighborhood, that wouldn't be the neighborhood that I'd go to. So that's all I really needed to say. You're going to hear a lot more about the traffic and all that, and the dangers of it, and it is, we live there, it's crazy. There's a plethora of accidents at that traffic light, so adding more cars there doesn't make any sense.
But they gave us the traffic count, the accidents.
No, I don't know the number.
They said 77 over the last three years. I would have thought it would have been higher, and they said there were no serious injuries.
Oh, no, there's lights there all the, you see sirens over there.
Yeah.
There's accidents there all the time. You hear, it's constant.
Yeah.
So adding more cars there, it's not tenable.
So...
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forstbauer. Anybody else would like to speak?
Hi, everyone. Eric Moye from 20 Neal Lane.
M-O-Y?
Yes, M-O-Y. You know, I look at it, I look at that section there as an artery, and if you were to build that there, build that building, it's like a blockage. I mean, the pictures that were shown, I don't know how they did, but how'd they get rid of all those cars? You know, realistically, if you go there, you Monday morning, 8:00, you got kids going to Eastern, where my son goes, kids going to ISD, it is a madhouse. Traffic is unbearable going around that section. So I don't understand how this gentleman over here did a study on Saturday when there's really nothing going on. These studies should be done 8:00 AM, 12:00, 6:00, and he will really see what goes on in that strip of Putnam. I mean, it's so intense, it's crazy. I just don't get it. I don't get how you can have all that and say, only six cars will leave that morning. I mean, it's just, it doesn't seem realistic. Another thing that doesn't seem realistic is this rooftop, so-called playground, park, whatever. I would never put my children up there to play. You know, you would see balls flying everywhere off the building. It's just, it doesn't make any sense to me. Maybe something a little lower, lesser units, but to put 20-unit, one, two bedrooms, 40-plus cars, I just don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moye.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Odell. I'm a partner in the law firm of Renee Light and Odell in White Plains. My firm is hired by civilians as well as insurance companies for liability and risk analysis. That's why I'm here. I've sent a letter to the attorneys for the applicant as well as to...
Mr. Tessie.
Yeah, my old friend Pete Tessie. I've been, I've lived in Greenwich since 1991, Old Greenwich and the main city of Greenwich. As you stated earlier...
We don't say that, you know that.
Well, you know, it's, it's...
Go ahead, sir.
It's becoming a city.
No, sir, go ahead. Don't even go there.
As you stated earlier, you have a job to do, and you all have a very important job to do. Ironically enough, the architect did a little Freudian slip, which you probably all heard in the beginning, but he tried to cover that up afterwards. He said it was going to be a large apartment complex. And by the way it looks, and by having 20 apartments and 40 vehicle parking spaces plus two more, it is large. It's large for this town of Greenwich, which is a New England town. They'd like to bring Brooklyn to Greenwich, and we're asking not to do that. Ironically enough, the architect talked about a couple of things. He said, as one of the neighbors stated, there's going to be a roof area for children to play. As you pointed out, that is going to be the only area for children to play. And unfortunately, we have too many incidents of children falling out of windows, coming off of roofs, and other people, partying and going off of roofs. Is that what we want? There's a liability there. Second, they've placed an area for trash compaction or garbage disposal directly in the front and facing the residence of Neal Lane. Where is that going to go when vermin, rodents, and other things want to go into that area of garbage? And where are they going to go next? Because guess what? The next street behind that is Neal Lane, and there's all residents there with all children. Dogs, children, elderly people, people of moderate age. There are many, many considerations, which I don't think that the developer, who actually spoke with Mr. Forstbauer, from what he's told me, and said to him, well, you know, you made the mistake of buying behind this property. That is a very telling statement, because guess what? He is focused on dollars. That's why when you asked, why so tight? Why so far apart? Why so high? Because every space, every foot means dollars. And unfortunately, that's going to come at the prejudice of those neighbors. Not only the neighbors, but their children, their pets. And the argument before about trying to use Neal Lane, and trying to now, let's change Neal Lane from what it is to just a one-way to accommodate this apartment building, this apartment building that should be in Brooklyn, where maybe they don't need cars. Maybe the option might be to say to the developer, look, don't use a parking lot at all. Make the building lower and not have any parking spaces at all, but buy another area or a lot down the road and accommodate your residence by giving them any type of a valet service for their cars. Happens in Manhattan, but we don't want to bring Manhattan here. Maybe this project is located best in a different area, where it is not where the residents of Neal Lane live. Neal Lane, Westcott, we have multiple streets there with children and young families, and families that want to move in, not behind an apartment complex that has potentials for liability and potentials for injury. I thank you very much for listening to all of us.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Foster.
Hey, hello. Susan Foster, Bramble Lane. I've lived in Riverside for, since 1990. I have a few comments about this project. First off, this is the gateway into Riverside. And, Mr. Architect, it's just not a building that's attractive. It just doesn't speak to me in any way, shape, or form. It obviously didn't speak to any of you, but I think it's, this is more critical than most buildings that you are going to ever have to look at. This is, this is historic, this is the gateway into Riverside. If we do not get this right, you will take down this area, because we are being pressed way too hard. Can it be done right? Yep. She-pill building that was proposed, I think if that building goes up, we will all be happy with it. It's a little bigger than what we wanted, but it does capture the feel of what we want in the neighborhood. What are other buildings in the neighborhood on that street that we like? So St. Catherine's, right? So what's the risk of making exceptions for this project? The building across the street from St. Catherine's. It's a one-story brick building, you know the building I'm talking about, has the fish store in it, the pizza store? Yeah. Right. Hey, what if that comes on the market? What if you go up three and a half stories, or you make some kind of special exception here? And now we have to make it a special exception there? The one really beautiful visual anchor on that strip is the steeplets at St. Catherine's. That will be, that, the vision of that will be gone. You won't see it anymore. Okay? Next to that brick building is a building that now contains Riverside Flooring and two other businesses. It was a house converted into a commercial building. It's beautiful. You didn't show that building. Are there any other buildings that seem acceptable that you could work with to try to get what we've been asking for over a year?
Ms. Foster, you got to talk to us.
Okay.
You can't keep talking.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Granoff isn't under planning, he's only commissioned at the moment.
But I'm hoping he'll design something that's going to work for us.
Well, he's hearing you, but look at us and talk to us.
Okay, so there are other buildings that I find, and other people on the Riverside Board find, and other people in the community find, acceptable-looking, and that if they could be woven together over time, we could have a sense of place and community in this area, instead of this hodgepodge of different buildings and stuff. So what else? St. Catherine's, of course, the Greenwich Bank Building, okay? It looks, looks good. Navis, for the kind of business it is, what was it? It's a tiny little architectural detail, it's the awnings on it, and the green, it's just a tiny little piece, but it just improves that corner a little bit. Pet Pantry, you all know why that works. So anyway, there are five buildings that can be worked with very easily to try to start weaving together and make a sense of space. I appreciate the speaker who came before me, who talked about the risks of the children on the building. I just think it's a terrible mistake. I can just imagine a bunch of teenagers up there having a party and what could ensue with the busy road out front and the balls coming over, or the darts, or whatever. But I also think the more critical thing is that there's just not outdoor space. This is a big issue, this is another issue you got to get right. If she-pill went up, or she-pill does go up at some point, there's not much outdoor space there in the, at the old estate treasuries, there's not much, they've got some balconies. At some point, we have to say no to this. There are going to be families in here with children. Where are they going to go? We have no parks in Riverside. We have two public schools. You can't take children under five to those schools when they're in session. Where are they going to go? You're urbanizing this area. I just think there has to, and I thought there's stuff in our POCD or something about outdoor space and residential space, but it just seems to be getting not as much mindfulness to it as it deserves. Anyway, I would urge you to really take your time on this. Really take your time and try to get this right, because you come off that highway, you see that building, I would not, I would have kept going. My search would have come to an end very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Anybody else? Hello?
Good evening. Liz Pelldinas, Owen Oakway, co-president of the Riverside Association. I don't want to be repetitive of what we've, what you've heard already, so I'm going to try and keep it brief, but the Riverside Association has been pressing you for inclusion in the POCD of some kind of plan for this stretch of Route 1. And I'm grateful that I'm the last person, because I've had time to cool my jets. I'm not an architect, but I see this area, our neighborhood, as an opportunity. It's not something to, it's a mutt today, and you can go and nitpick all of those buildings, but there's huge opportunity, and someone in this room has been charged with a .599-acre lot of putting something on it that heads us in a direction of Riverside character to be defined, I recognize that, but I would think that that's an architect's dream job, is to take that first step in that right direction. And I was a little bit saddened that, as I said at ARC, that the direction for this building was dictated somewhat by corporate headquarters of McDonald's, and I think that's worth repeating. The project is big, and it's big because we're trying to get moderate-income housing. We want that. We want people to be able to afford to live in Greenwich. One thing that we haven't talked about tonight, there are many two-bedroom units in this proposal. Which units of the four will be designated for moderate-income housing? I hope it's some of those two-bedroom units. Maybe that's something that we should be asking for specifically, so that we can get families who need moderate-income housing into those units, however many the X is at the end. We have to get something back for the benefits we're giving. Susan addressed the issue of green space, that's a continuing concern. This is a residential community, you want it to be something that people are attracted to. And the market rate, people in these buildings want a place to go outside, too. I mean, that, it's part of what will make it attractive. One thing that I heard at your briefing session yesterday that I explored today was the issue of transit. I wondered, yes, there is a bus that takes you to the Greenwich train station, and I've heard at past hearings that that takes a fair amount of time, and it's not a particularly heavily-traveled route. I would think that somebody who lived in this building would say, I'm going to the Old Greenwich train station or the Riverside train station if I'm a commuter and I don't want to use my car. So I tried to figure out today how you would do that. The walking distance to both is comparable, one is one mile, the other is 1.1 if you go to Riverside Avenue. The issue of the bus was amusing, we've talked about buses at previous hearings. I actually went to the Connecticut Transit website, and there is one bus a day that takes you from the corner of Sound Beach Avenue in Putnam to the Old Greenwich train station. So if you happen to be going at 7:30 in the morning, you're in business, and if you need And if you need to get back from the train station at night, if you're coming home at 5:25, you can take a bus back up to Putnam, but then you're still going to walk past the Commons. So most of the building is still going to be market rate. Most of it will still be driven by cars. There are homes with families, so it's 20 homes with 20 families of varying sizes on a less than three-quarters of an acre property. And these are all things, and you have an immediately abutting residential neighborhood with a very narrow road. The last piece of this, going back to Putnam. I think of design magazines and today how you can see a room that has a piece of mid-century modern furniture in it next to an antique, next to a Kandinsky painting hanging on the wall. And all of those things can go together. They all are artistically valid art forms appreciated by different people. That's what the Post Road is today. And this is the opportunity to add another piece of art. You guys are the curator. You get to figure out what is that piece of art. But take this room called Riverside in a direction that fits the residents who live there today and the ones who may come to 1205 Putnam Avenue someday so that we're all proud to be part of the town of Greenwich, Riverside. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paldunas.
And thank you for your information on the schedule for the bus.
Liz?
I don't know how to buy a ticket, but I can reach the schedule.
Well, I tried to find that bus schedule once, a couple of years ago, and I couldn't. Sir, come on up. Sorry.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be brief. My name is Michael Rineery of the aforementioned Rineery Light and Odell. I have the distinct pleasure of sitting on the White Plains zoning board. Been there since 2005, so I can appreciate what you have to do, what you're going through. I can appreciate what the developer's trying to do and also our clients, the Forest Bowers, as neighbors that come before us in similar situations. What I'd like to just point out is the areas of, you know, your municipal code of Greenwich that, when I look through it, sort of, you know, popped out at me and what I'm sure you'll all be considering. Because as you consider the public health, safety, and, you know, the general welfare and the comfort and the convenience that this project is allowed to go forward, you've heard all the concerns. I mean, just the traffic study alone where you have 615A1A and will there be effect on traffic conditions? We talked about it for 45 minutes, or you all did. And so Neal Lane is clearly going to be directly affected, and it's just one of the concerns that you spoke about. We're talking about 40 spaces plus all the visitors. They're going to be parking on Neal Lane. They'll be parking on other adjacent streets. It's just what happens. We go through it in White Plains all the time, and I hear all the associations that come up and say, "Parking, parking, parking." And we can appreciate that the developer did try to do something with all the spaces there, but for 20 units, most people have two cars in their family. And then you also have the visibility at the exit points under 615A1C to consider. Again, we heard about some accidents tonight. There's going to be more. People unfortunately are doing too many things while driving, phones, radios. It's getting worse, unfortunately. 615-2 also popped out at me that, you know, you're tasked with the protection of the environmental quality and the preservation and enhancement of property values. Unfortunately, I don't think this project as it's designed will enhance the property values of those other neighbors. It's going to deleteriously affect 24 Neal Lane and some of the other nearby properties because of that F A R that you were bringing up. It's just too big of a property on that size lot. Again, I can understand the developer wanting to maximize the return, the ROI on the property, but it's maybe not the right spot for it. Then you also have 615-3B, which you've all brought up as the adequacy of usable outdoor space. We're talking about space on the roof, which only these residents get to kind of view and see. And again, that has a little bit of a Manhattan feel that I don't think really goes to this area. And then finally, quickly, the applicant will need a special permit use, so you have 617D. And then in those areas, you're looking at number two, there's going to be an effect for sure on storm drainage and sewage with sewage disposal. Number three, there's going to be an adverse effect on areas located close to this use of this property. Number six, you'll have pedestrian circulation and that type of thing. There will be an adverse effect on that as well as the streets and increasing traffic congestion found on number seven. And then most importantly, 617D10 where you'll have an adverse effect on residential uses and affecting the neighborhood's essential characteristics, which you heard a lot about from the Riverside Association. So I just wanted to sum those up, and I really appreciate your time.
Mr. Rineery, before you sit down, please forgive me for asking you this. Those are our site plan standards and our special permit standards, 615 and 617. Did anything strike you as being materially different from White Plains? Anything that you said, "White Plains does it better"? Did anything strike you? Because I've never looked at the White Plains regs. I look at Connecticut all the time, but I've never looked at a set from New York. Did anything strike you?
No, they're actually right in line with, we use case law, that we also have to determine as to, you know, those types of impacts.
Yeah, we have to follow the statutes.
Right. And our code, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. The code has had its changes, which is why we have our board, because there's tons of legally non-conforming setback issues. But, you know, White Plains downtown is really expanding, and you have, like in the Battle Hill area near the train station, a lot of concerns where people want to put up larger type, these types of situations so people can utilize the train, but then parking becomes the main issue. And again, you have all the stormwater issues, so DPOW gets involved.
Your regs look a lot like ours.
Very similar.
Okay. Just curious.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night. Thank you.
So I think that's it for the public, right? Guys, anybody else? No? Okay. That seemed to be it.
Okay.
So.
We're looking for some direction from you.
I know you're looking for direction and...
Can I inquire about a few areas?
Yeah, why don't you do that because I'm kind of...
So what I think I'm hearing from the commission and from the neighbors, too, is that nobody's clamoring to have a commercial use here on this location, that everyone's good with the residential.
Well, that would be good. Good. That's good. Common ground, no commercial use. Good.
Okay. And as you know, as of right, they could build a commercial building in 15,000 square feet.
Katie called it. Katie told you that? Katie called it.
Okay, so that's good.
That's good.
And it's also trying to be more respectful of the neighborhood, too, with the traffic and so forth. All right, so everyone's good with that. I think there may be some ways of looking at the use of Neal Lane and the Post Road to access this property that might actually decrease the amount of traffic on Neal overall or at least won't increase it.
Okay.
Okay? If we were just to go out Post Road. Let's look into that some more, and I'll have Chris look into that some more. And if the neighbors have any ideas or suggestions in that regard, they're free to call me. 983-6750, local number.
Forgive me. The problem is, do you have one anymore? Any more easy ones? Any more low-hanging fruit there?
I'm not hearing, although I heard a little bit yesterday, the possibility of going up. I'm not hearing you want us to go up any higher.
That's, okay, so here's the thing where we really, I don't know what kind of guidance we're going to give you, and I think the only, I can only ask people. I would like A R C to continue reviewing the design, but we have to somehow weigh in on bulk, F A R, height, coverage. Everybody kind of doesn't like, people really, we're uncomfortable with that first floor of all parking, what that looks like. And I don't know how to give you guidance right now. I know what I would want, but I'm not sure what anybody else is coming up. So all I can suggest is that I start down the end of the row and see what happens.
I think my concern is overall, though, that, you know, when you pass this regulation after a five-year study, really more like 25 years, because I was in the individual housing partnership looking to do things like this, you spend a lot of time getting to where you are. And I know you want to try to tweak it a bit because you're not happy with it necessarily in certain situations.
Right.
But I'm just a little worried that the commission, to a certain extent, is, you give with one hand and then you take it away with the other.
I got that.
And I think there has to be a healthy balance here.
I got it.
We're willing to work with you folks, the A R C, and the neighbors, too. But I think you have to be cautious about that because there are other alternatives to developing the site.
Before we change 6110, wait, wait. So there are other alternatives to developing the site? You would do townhouses, for example?
No, I'm just saying you could have a commercial use, obviously. There's the statutory rights.
You're saying that there could be something with greater density than what we're looking at now?
I'm not, and all I'm saying is, I think everyone needs to be aware of...
That's the potential.
What we're doing and how we're working together.
So why don't, I think it's more than the F A R question. I think we're dealing with coverage and we're dealing with lack of green space. And what it, I actually think Mr. Rineery hit the nail on the head when he referenced 617D. And, because it echoes what the neighbors want. They are talking about, can we do something that contributes to better character in Riverside and to something that is more consistent with what Greenwich aspires to be and less of a modern, current-looking structure? Because it is not what seems, it's not the Greenwich aspiration from what we've heard for a year and a half. So I'm going to let everybody else go and see if they, if anybody kind of agrees with me because I'm holding back. Mr. Low? Guidance, or just maybe we just talk about it amongst us. I can toss out, I would do, I might be willing to do more height if it was differently designed and it gave us greater greens, greater green space around the building so that it looks friendlier. It looks more human and approachable and less cold. I'm sorry, I'm not criticizing. To me, it's a colder thing when it's all like that. Okay, go ahead. So, Mr. Low, what are your thoughts?
I think we can't be tone-deaf to some of the statements that we heard from the neighbors. And I think that there seems to be some confusion about just exactly the impact on traffic. So we have to nail down what that impact is. And it's, and maybe it's somewhere between the expressions from the neighbors and what your, the applicant's traffic person, company came up with. But somehow, there's got, there's got to be a, an objective traffic report that analyzes this situation realistically from both sides. Because I'm not hearing that.
You do have your own beta review. That reviews it, and our traffic, but they have to also abide by the same standards that are national standards. Now, there's some obvious interpretation.
The second component of this is working with the neighbors, I would say. And the other, the third element is the green space. And I'm not sure that, I kind of agree that, I don't quite know how that roof thing works or why that's, it's desirable because the rest of the area is blacktop. Basically, there's not enough green space.
Actually, I think it's been encouraged by the commission in the past, and I think it's actually in the P O C D, to create spaces like this on top of it.
I understand.
More and more now. And then as it will be in 143 Sound Beach as well. So, and we are, as far as lot coverage is concerned, almost where you have to be in order to meet the requirements without having any moderate income. We're just at 78%, 75% is what's normally permitted. But again, we'll look at it. And again, I think, too, we could look at, maybe working with beta as well, what we can do with the traffic pattern to make it work better for everybody.
Ms. Gus?
Well, I think that we've touched on virtually a lot of issues here, and I think the, if we can't get, if we can't work out the Neal Road, it is, it'll be a nonstarter. So we have to be able to get into the, into the lot. And then the, just the look of the fill of the building, which is A R C's going to work on.
Right.
So that would be my two comments.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just take a quick tack here on green space and go back to something that somebody else mentioned earlier, and that's below-grade parking. I mean, it'd solve a lot of issues, and it's a matter of economics. But on one hand, the F A R, if, you know, .9 F A R were allowed, that's a significant, you know, bonus. And it's not all offset by lower rents and only 20% of the overall units. So I think spending the money to put some or all the parking below grade would go a long way to improving, A, the aesthetics and certainly having green space for the tenants.
I'm not sure it's physically possible to put all the parking below grade, but we'll look into it and see what we can do about maybe lowering part of the parking so that we can bring the building down or something.
I think I'm getting to where we're gonna, what we're gonna ask you to do. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Levy.
Again, the bulk is a concern to all of us. The F A R is a very big concern of mine. And I think that the, the, I'd really love to, for you to take another go at the traffic, the traffic pattern and some of your assumptions, because I think the assumptions are a little too generic for me.
No, that's just the look.
I'd like to, my understanding of the site, I would not make the same assumptions. And it, and I, I'm wondering if you can recast this, and some people were thinking that, were surprised by some of the assumptions that you made. But the bulk, the massing, the F A R, the traffic are things that we really need to see some change in. And I'm sure you can do it.
Now, just, just let's go to the F A R for a second. Really rough math. The underlying zone would give them about 10 units? Half?
If you're at, what if you're saying?
At .5.
At 13,000 square feet, which is what?
The underlying zone would be about 10 units. With the old regulations, at .75, you'd be looking at 16, 18 units. So no matter how you cut it, you're somewhere between 10 and 20. As of right, you could do 10 without doing 6110. Under the old 6110, before we changed it, you could do probably, I actually got a higher number. I think I got about 18, but I was really, you know, it's back of the envelope. So you are dealing with a lot of apartments, no matter how, I mean, in our terms, no matter how you do it. So before I let you talk, Mr. Yaski, so I just wanted to make that clear to everybody that you don't turn it into a two-family house when you reduce the F A R. It's still going to be apartments because that is what the regulations permit. No matter how you slice it, that is what the regulations permit. It's just how far you go. Mr. Yaski?
No, I think we covered it. Size, the style, to use a word there. The neighborhood character, I think, is probably a lot more important. I understand the regulations and you're going to get an apartment complex, but maybe a smaller one, a little bit smaller. And I was running some numbers, too. You had asked me this the other day, and, you know, I actually have fewer, you know, I was closer to 16, but, you know, it's not...
Six, yeah.
Yeah, okay. But I think we've covered all the comments.
Yeah. Here's what I'm thinking, to try this out on your clients, based on what everybody said. What about if, before you go back to A R C, come back to us with cheaply done, don't worry about DPOW. I know you've got open stuff with Sauer and DPOW, and you have a lot of staff issues to address still, but don't worry about that right now. And go to, do it cheap, do some sketches. What would happen if you went up with more green area? What would happen if you buried some of the parking? How can you make this, what Riverside was looking for, which is, wow, we finally have something that epitomizes Riverside's goal of how it wants to look? And I know it's in Mr. Granoff's toolkit because he did a beautiful job with that old Eversource building, with rescuing it. I mean, it, I mean, the detail that he corrected on it and stuff, I mean, he can do this. But if you guys look at, just sketch out some alternatives of the directions that you could go. We recognize that you have, that, you're still going to do apartments.
Right.
But where could you go and how could you handle it differently besides addressing this traffic issue? Just something, don't go, don't go spending a lot of money. Just give us ideas of where you're leaning and what you could do. you're leaning, and what you could do that works better for the community. Because we're really, we are really focusing in on the 617 issue here.
Okay.
That's fair. I think that the F A R will fall from that. Whether you actually go to a .8, it could be that everybody looks at it and says, this is phenomenal, because it's so, I'll give you a crazy example. Do you know a building that people love in town is the one on Lafayette?
Which building?
That was that?
The six-story Lafayette.
Yeah. Okay, isn't that crazy? Everybody hates big buildings in town, but that is so iconic to Greenwich now.
I just tried to figure out what that was, I was looking for it today.
Lafayette Court.
Lafayette Court, no wonder, I was looking at the other Lafayette, I was like, where is this?
But isn't that funny? Because to me, that's everything that I thought people didn't want, but that has become iconic. So, how do you get to something that is actually a plus?
Well, don't Lafayette Court, it's six stories.
No, I mean, in this term.
About 10 times the land area for that.
In this term, how, how do you get to something that becomes iconic and works within what you're doing with?
But to that point, you know, if you have to go higher in order to do something, that's what we want to know, what you can do.
Okay, I think we'll study it, see what we need to do to try to.
And I'm okay with that, because, and Nick, who really objects to the height, is gonna probably murder us all when he comes back, but he wasn't here, so.
Remember that.
Nick hates the 47 and a half feet. So, but, but A R C was willing to explore that, they actually went there.
Correct.
And the fact that they thought that style-wise, that could be okay, I think that opens us up as well. I mean, they are 11 smart guys and gals, but, so, give us options.
You're okay with the streetscape, in fact, that where we are in relation to the other buildings, you're not looking to have us push back towards the lane, because I've heard some of that yesterday?
Oh, yeah, that would be, if you could, I mean, we're looking for greenscape, but, two things. One is definitely, some kind of recreation area would be awesome. On the other hand, we're, we're just about to start an implementation task force on the P O C D, if we get it approved, that is going to look at the post-road streetscape. It's the first thing we're gonna do. To inform your thinking, it's the first thing we're doing with implementation of the P O C D, is the post-road streetscape. And we're looking at trees, and lighting, and under, you know, low planting, and to really create a welcoming feel to Greenwich, that, this gateway that people use all day. So, this is an opportunity to step in that direction. So, yeah, if you could set it back, but I'm not sure you can, and also give us green space in the back.
Well, that's the issue, because it's the tension between what we're trying to do and the.
And you have, you have two sides to this project also, so.
That's the tension, and that's what we're trying to.
And the other side, no, what I think Mr. Levy was also gonna do is reiterate the neighbor comment, that from the rear, it not have its back to the neighbors, but be, it fit in with them as well, so, but that's, I think it's gonna be hard to set it back if we get recreation space on site. And that's probably the, the point of Ms. Foster, is it's gonna be more important to have something that people can enjoy, to live there. Because there's really no place to go when you're there.
Well, that's part of the rooftop idea, but whatever, we'll push through that.
That if you have, for example, is everybody gonna go up there with their strollers?
Can I, can I ask a point of clarification? So, when you're talking about like an iconic building type of thing, because Mr. Granoff talked about being a contextualist and whatever, but if, if, is it, is it fair to say one of the options he could come back with is just complete his own thought about it? In other words, to start this whole streetscape thing that you're talking about?
We're not talking about a skin, no, we're not just, we're not talking about just skinning the building. We're talking about bulk, and, and proportion and scale.
But doesn't that, doesn't that part, doesn't that speak to the flat roof versus gable and all that other stuff?
Yeah, I think if we free Mr. Granoff's imagination, I think he is tending towards, to be, the best way I can put it is, towards more of a mid-century reference nowadays, the flat, more, more square. And from what we heard tonight, that's not what people wanna see happen, and it's not what A R C wanted.
Okay, so.
So, I would not encourage leaning towards a mid-century kinda, or 1980s.
Right, so the guidance is more peaks or whatever, residential looking?
I would say, I mean, I'm thinking.
Peter mentioned a tower.
Is it crazy to say that it's arts and crafts a little bit, that the pet pantry is small? Is art, is the pet pantry sort of arts and crafts?
It is barn. There was times with the barn.
Oh, no, no speaking from the public, sorry, folks. If you wanna say something, you're welcome to come up and talk to us.
I think maybe if Rich could, to ask you for a second, because if, if I were the architect, going from what, what is constituted a New England architectural style?
No clue.
I have no idea.
I'll, I'll give you.
I also don't wanna build Avalon style on this location, and I don't think anybody wants that.
I think we're all clear that we don't like the Avalon buildings.
And that has gables, and clabbered, and stuff like that. So, maybe, Rich, do you wanna, maybe get some more direction if you can?
There's something, I just wanted.
We're kinda leaving it to you a little bit?
All I can say is, this is what we call in my profession, design by committee.
Yeah, you don't wanna do that, so clear in your hands.
No good comes out of it. We're, we're listening to everybody's, including the neighbors.
And you're gonna go do it.
And we're gonna come up with something that hopefully everybody will love.
Yeah, I mean, you know how to do that.
But I've also got a client that, you know, needs to build enough building here, according to your regulations, to make it economically viable, and below a certain height, and bulk, and unit count, there's no project here. And that'll make the neighbors happy, but not my client.
Okay, but skip that part, we know, we know that stuff, so, but what was, A R C was willing to give you more height if you reduced the coverage, and we're willing to explore that, with a lot of hesitation, but.
Understood, and that, that's a helpful point that we will explore.
And then, you've heard the comments, I would say run with it, because I don't know what else to tell you. If I, what the heck is that pet pantry building?
Do you feel like you, that's like an.
Well, as my partner Irene said, it's a barn-style structure. It's trying to be Mission, but it's not really.
It's kinda Mission-y, arts and crafty, prairie, I don't know. Okay, Irene is, your partner's having a heart attack.
We're not, we're not trying to say, this is the style that the building should be.
Could you let your partner speak and come up here, because she's, she's waving her arms?
Yes.
No, no, you have to come all the way up and say your name, and.
My name is Irene Alafi, I'm a partner.
You've been here before, yes, hi.
Hi, how are you? So, I was listening to all your comments, and I really respect everything you say, but I'm, I'm completely confused at this point, with the.
I thought we might be confusing, okay, go ahead.
With the comments on the, that refers to the styles and architecture, and what you guys appreciate and like. So, what I would like to clear, kind of clarify with you a little bit. You said that you really liked the Eversource building that, that.
You didn't, you guys did a nice job on it.
Yes, we did a very nice job, and we all, we all liked this building as well. But can you tell me, like, you just criticized this particular project, saying that it's bulky, it's, it's, it's just a big, it's, it's a big cube, or whatever you call it, right?
That's what the A R C said.
And you didn't like the plateau, right? So, Eversource building?
I know, I'm just saying you did a nice job on the Eversource building. I didn't say go build the Eversource building, I didn't mean that at all.
Okay.
I just said, the capturing of the essence of that building was beautifully done, so you guys should be able to capture.
The essence of what building you are referring to on East Patnam Avenue or Neil Avenue? Can you point to me any building that we are trying to capture?
No, I can't.
Which buildings we are capturing? Please give us directions.
Ms. Foster loves about Greenwich.
I would love to capture, whatever you tell me.
What do you love about Greenwich?
Ms. Foster mentioned five buildings, Mavis, she mentioned St. Catherine, she mentioned Orson Melona, Greenwich Bank.
Okay, don't, you know, you're not supposed to shout out.
So, somebody, you, you mentioned Pet Pantry. Pet Pantry, I think, completely doesn't belong that, on, on East Patnam Avenue, or even Greenwich, because, because Pet Pantry is a, is a, trying to be a big barn with a silo tower, that's what it is. That tower is a silo, right? And the building itself is a big, is a barn. So, building like that is, wants to be in where? In Vermont, in Maine, in Massachusetts, amongst the fields, right? But not on East Patnam Avenue, or not even in Riverside, correct?
The fantasy that we have.
And, and that country, St. Kitchin is, is, is a church.
Right, okay.
Do we wanna do a church?
Okay, I, I think we have to leave this, they're talking, A R C says New England style.
What is it?
You're the architect, my friend. I'm not gonna design by committee, I'm not an architect. All I can tell you is, there, everybody's looking for something that is more New England style, they are, they want it to speak to the personality of Riverside, they don't want box-like and commercial scale, well, forget the scale, because I think you're kinda stuck with some of the scale. And they want, but I do agree with you, I, I think the point is, I think what the point, why, why Ms. Altman's saying, come in with options, is, let's. Play with it.
We've seen this.
Do cheap sketches.
You've heard comments all over the place, come in with some options. You know, you're, you're vague and wide right now, how about taller and higher, you know, so with more green? How about lowers, with, with less parking? How about more peaks? How about with the tower? I mean, let's just, just give us a bunch of options, forget about all the other things, just aesthetically. What about more green, you know, streetscape, green space, you heard that, so, just, let's just see and have a conversation around some options.
Another architect seeking clarification?
Yes, Eric Sandbell, also a partner and Granoff architect.
Oh, my God, Riverside has really blown your brain right open, okay?
We're gonna come back, we're, we're, we're gonna nail, we're gonna nail this, but I need some site guidance. I need some guidance in terms of the parking, in terms of the green space.
We did, we're giving you guidance, try to bury some of the parking, and give more green space. If you can't give it anywhere else, give it in the rear.
The rear.
Or, behind, where the residents can come out and enjoy a beautiful little oasis. Keep a nice front onto the post-road, so that there's a welcoming boulevard kinda feeling on the post-road.
Perfect.
But give the residents a place to take their strollers out.
And, and you, and I'm super here to close off Neil if you could, but if you, I mean, if there's some traffic option, I mean, I think that's, can you come in with both options? Like, one where you use Neil, and one where you don't?
We, we will try, we will, in terms of skip, giving you kinda sketches, and being loose about it, that, that'll be what, what we'll explore. I, you know, that whole left turn, or, you know.
I didn't get the impression that people like the idea of the one-way situation.
No, it wasn't really working for people.
Yeah, so, so, it's just, you know, the, the.
Haslam's gonna have to keep his day job.
So, I mean, if, if you could look at an option of what it would look, like, what would it mean to the building if you had to close off Neil Lane? Does it, you know, what does that mean? Is it 18 units? Is it still 20, but it's, like, what would that mean?
Fine, that, that'll be part of our exploration. The other question was, I think I heard, I, I know the board said look at maybe lowering some, or burying the parking. I, I thought I heard you mention possibly some relief on parking, or maybe that was just my wishful thinking, in terms of, if my, if my client said that the demographics and his numbers, you worked with a 1.5, 1.3 parking count, is that something I can, I can explore?
You can certainly explore.
I, I think, yeah, I mean, the commission's obviously gonna speak on that, but, one thing that I think would be really helpful if you're gonna go in that direction.
It would be to get some analysis from similar areas, meaning built, built 20-unit buildings in other areas in Fairfield County, and what's, you know, in similar situations, I don't, you know, I don't know.
And what, if you could do that, we could ask the, our firm to.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, we've done that before, and we did it on 143, actually, in that particular instance.
Why don't we have staff get back to you guys during the time that you're doing these sketches with your ideas? Why don't we have staff give you input on whether or not they can get to an analysis that gives you flexibility on the parking? I, I caution you that the neighbors are worried about what happens when there's a party, et cetera, but we ask that every time somebody does a two-family as well. I mean, as, as Mr. Granoff said, parking seems to drive so many decisions. Okay, so that's, and, and don't do it in depth, but sort of play with it, and see, and maybe you talk to staff before you come back in, and kinda, and then we'll kick it back to A R C. I think we've gotta give them the size of the box.
Yeah, we got, yeah.
We've gotta give them the size of the box, that's why I'm holding back. I'd like to just hand it over to A R C and be done with you, but I can't.
They were having the same discussions you've been having, so it was, this is helpful.
Yeah, I know, but the box, the amount of parking and the size of the box is our job, so we gotta get that done before we kick it back to them, and then they can, they can worry about fenestration and materials, and all those architect-y things.
Okay, all right, great.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, Mr. Haslam.
Timing-wise, we're looking at, the, we're not gonna make the December meeting, it sounds like, so we're probably looking at the first one, January.
Well, you could, if you do it quick, I mean, it's, we're just asking you for sketches, we're not asking you for architectural plans.
All right, we'll see what we can do.
We're asking you for.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna route it to anybody, or, you know, so.
And we're not gonna worry about whether you fixed your D P W and your sewer and blah, blah, it's just, it's just to generate another conversation, really.
That's all right, so let's try to get on the next meeting.
You know, meaning December.
Yeah, sorry.
Landscaping, you play with native species, you know what to do.
Okay.
Frankly, it does help to see it in context, I know that starts getting pricey, so if that's too much, then okay, then fine, but I think it does help to see it.
There's a, I mean, if you can do some sort of space for families, guys in the back, hey, hey, woo, if Riverside wants to talk, you guys can go out to the hallway. The idea of having some space for families, I thought that was a great, just where people can be outside.
It's McDonald's. Happy Meals.
McDonald's roof, yeah.
Okay, so you're definitely keeping your day job.
Okay, thank you, we got some direction.
Thank you, Mr. Haslam.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, and we may not come back.
That was, the last one did.
We did, really?
Oh, yeah, no, my last application called it the right door.
What was it?
It, it was.
Yeah, it's 62 Mason Street.
Residential or commercial?
Residential.
It was another one of these big, kind of a thing.
Yeah, that was, that was.
Was it a job for Eric?
No.
That's good.
I mean, it was, it was a war. I mean, it was, it was a war.
Really?
Uh, no. Details.
It was more torn.
I'm trying to kill a couple hours.
Take a Cinderella.
I think it's, I think it's a Cinderella.
What?
4:30, 4:30.
Yeah, he'll do well.
They're all, they're all torches.
Yep.
By himself.
He's got my cannon fired.
You should have seen this when he was scared.
He goes, "Oh, you're going to say that to a black man? I'm going to get Diana."
Going to play black cards?
Without doubt, he's three feet taller than I am.
And he has more.
If he says he's going to do something, you know?
He's telling us, his cooking might go in there.
So, I, I, I said, come on, please.
Oh, he moved over.
He's always been over there.
I didn't even notice that.
She was here.
I'm going to dump that on, um...
Guide.
And then...
So you have two brushes.
And then the other...
Yes, you, you and Goss are seated.
Who was it saying? They said, "You got sex?"
Yes.
Okay, so if, um, if we keep for two times...
Well, sure.
I was, I was.
I didn't even notice that.
Sneaky foot.
She was here.
I'm going to dump that on, um...
Guide.
And then the other...
Yes, you, you and Goss are seated.
Who was it saying?
Thank you.
They said, "You got sex?"
Yes.
I see the good character.
Okay, so, um, if we keep for two times...
Well, sure.
Okay.
According to your Spanish home, is there any...
Do we have to vote?
I made a choice.
I'm supposed to nominate it?
Yes, I did nominate, I nominated for another three-year term on the Architectural Review Committee. You can dump it on Goss, too, because she's seated as well.
Of course.
All right.
Give him a lesson there.
Um, yeah, so I made that choice. Almonds, Costco.
Tom said, "What else do you want?" It's not working.
Okay?
It's true.
Well, you were nice.
Katie's going forward.
Yeah, I know.
Anyway, good comment.
Very good comment.
Right.
I'm just going to get this off of the...
Sick 110 gene. Subterranean parking.
That's a good question.
Okay.
Should be.
Then he went to the architectural.
For what?
I got chocolate.
They don't have this better voice.
Dark chocolate?
No.
Nothing?
That's a rice crack.
Chocolate wakes you up.
I can't see, anyway. Yeah.
Our next application is Barry Greenwich LLC for a final site plan and special permit at 255 Field Point Road.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Tessie.
Good evening.
I got your name right.
Well, that's because Tom was hiding. John Tessie, for the record, Gilby II Celestians Point, representing the applicant. This application, as I believe you all know, is a proposal for what I'll call an adaptive reuse of a, essentially an industrial building, actually located on 255 Field Point Road between the...
Oh, you're sick, too, huh? You have a cold as well?
I think I, something happened during that last application. Not exactly sure what I caught. But, anyway, the property is located between Field Point Road and the railroad tracks, as you know, where there's the intersection with Field Point and Prospect Street. The former Pet Pantry Building is located to the north, which is now an under-construction EverSource station. And then across from this property, in the Pet Pantry, former Pet Pantry property, is actually Mr. Granov's office building that you were discussing during the, or pointing to, I should say, during the last application. This application is, in terms of the, in terms of the adaptive reuse, is to convert, which was a facility for the distribution of propane, both on-site, where people would go to fill up their, their barbecue tanks, and also deliveries at home, to a recreational facility that will be for the playing of ping pong. We propose seven active tables, as you've seen on the floor plans, and we propose, as part and parcel of the application, to actually improve the overall site conditions as they are today by making some site modifications in terms of taking out some loading areas, creating a circular drive so that people, because our anticipation is that particularly during the afternoons, there will be drop-offs of students by parents, so that we've created this turnaround for the drop-offs for easy ingress and egress. So I think we created actually a safer environment there in terms of the maneuverability on the site. And so far as our overall parking is concerned, as you know, there are parking spaces across the street, which is to the west. Those, those parking spaces were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission back in 1990 as part and parcel of its approval of the existing site plan, as you see it today, which was for the, for the facility I just described. I didn't see in your, in your packet a copy of that over, that previous site plan, but I do have a copy for the record.
Sorry. We asked about it yesterday because we were surprised, we had, when we, we were curious about how that parking came to be, and it was told to us, but we did not see that approval. So if you have it...
Yes, I do.
Yeah, you might as well give it to Pat for...
Okay, I'll give it to Pat.
The files and if you, I'll hand it down to him, because I'd love to look at it real fast. While you're doing that, so you're going to go to Wetlands?
Yeah, just to finish. There's also in the packet, a copy, suddenly zoning, it's also Wetlands. There was a Wetlands permit granted, not for this site, but for the utilization and some work having to do with the parking across the street. This application does not propose to do anything across the street, but rather leave it per the original approval that you have a copy of at that. Now, getting back to your comment, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I didn't want to forget what I was going to say. So far as Wetlands is concerned, we'll be on the Wetlands Agency as, on the 20th.
20th, yeah.
Twenty...
It's, I think.
Yeah, seven plus eight is 25. Okay, the 25th will be on, we expect to be on ARC on the 20th of November for the further review of the application. Now, with respect, with respect to inland Wetlands, there is, I don't know, Pat, if you've seen it, but there was actually a staff report for Mr. Klausie and...
I have not, but...
Okay, just so you know, it's not going to matter that much, but...
But you were not going to run into a problem, was what somebody, Bianca mentioned yesterday that she had seen a draft of something that Wetlands might be okay with it.
Yes, the recommendation is actually not even to elevate it to a full commission decision, but rather, I'm sorry, agency decision, but it, but to be handled as a, as what they call an agent approval. So we, we, we believe that will be carried out, and so we fully expect that the agency will spend little time on that and approve it. But then again, it still has to go through that process because we don't have a permit at, at the moment.
Yeah, it's interesting, because the conservation comments were, that, that there would be heightened scrutiny from Wetlands.
If, if we were, if we were going to propose, and I talked to Pat Sesto about that, about, about what we were doing. That's how this wound up at the end of the day, being an agent approval situation, because she had thought we were proposing to do work on the other side.
So the regrading along the riverbank isn't hap, no?
No, no, not at all. We're not touching it.
Got it, okay.
And she knows that, that's how wound up.
That's why, got it.
Being dropped and in this, and in the, the staff report, which I'll, I'll hand you here, you, you can see, I guess I have to stop talking when I walk away from...
You do, and then in the meantime, guess what? I get to, I get to interrupt.
Okay, well, that's the staff report where you can see, we only talk about...
I tried really hard.
Oh, I didn't know you missed that, sorry.
I was really making it. Okay, so you're going to Wetlands.
Yeah, 25th.
The other thing that's important right now is the, that, from what I understand, you've got to satisfy the sewer questions.
Yeah, Mr., Ms...
Yeah.
Should I respond?
Well, I think you have to respond to him, and he's got to give, give us a happy camper sign-off.
On sewer, let me, let me just...
Because of the horse neck issue, and you know, we always have to be super careful about the horse neck issue, so...
Sewer, I'm sorry, let me let you finish.
Yeah, because I was letting you finish.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I don't think we want to see there being silence.
So, so they're asking you to address, before we give this approval...
Yes.
That you provide the flows for them and what's going into the horse neck sewer.
Yeah.
And then once he's satisfied with that, I assume that by the time you've been to Wetlands, you'll have done that.
That's, that's been submitted.
Okay, good.
In fact, I believe Pat, Larry Liebman, our engineer, gave a, provided you with a copy, just for your records.
I believe those, that information came in. Have we gotten response from Mr. Femenella? Is that...
No, no, no. Just a copy of what was submitted to Mr. Femenella.
Yes, no, no, we, we received your flow, your flow analysis.
Yeah, so, Mr. Liebman will, will be following up. There was also a point made by Mr. Femenella regarding the, the sharing of the sewer lateral with EverSource, and there's communication there. So we believe it's all going to flow together, okay?
Okay. So if those two pieces go well, then, if you, ignore him, just ignore him. Weird question for you. Are you guys going to have liquor here?
Well, the long and the short of it is...
Just the answer, Mr. Tessie.
Is, well, like everything else, the, the answer is, we're not proposing right now liquor. I don't believe, quite frankly, there's a, there's a vehicle under our regulations, because the only type of permit we could really qualify for would be a cafe permit, and that's only now allowed in theaters, so, under our...
Yeah.
Right. We have, we'd like to work with staff on that a bit. That is part and parcel of, you know, it's interesting, because it's allowed for racquetball facilities, that actually the state law allows racquetball as a separate, and you have to have at least five courts.
Somebody love it for... So you, you will address that?
But actually not, I don't know how you tell the difference between racquetball and squash.
The long and short of that is that you would, you will address that at a future point with staff.
We would have to come in to see if you'd be open.
Separately at a future point with staff.
That's...
Because you've got to have food, et cetera. And really, the only concern with that parking being across the street was, you know, then you were going to have people driving across the...
Oh, we would only want beer, it would be a beer and wine, just because that's part and parcel. with Eversource, and there's communication there, so we believe it's all gonna flow together, okay?
Okay. So if those two pieces go well, then, if you, ignore him, just ignore him. Weird question for you, are you guys gonna have liquor here?
Well, the long and the short of it is...
Just the answer, Mr. Desi.
Is, well, like everything else, the, the answer is, we're not proposing right now liquor. I don't believe, quite frankly, there's a, there's a vehicle under our regulations, because the only type of permit we could really qualify for would be a cafe permit, and that's only now allowed in theaters, so, under our...
Yeah.
Right. We have, we'd like to work with staff on that a bit, that, that is part and parcel of, you know, it's interesting, because it's allowed for racquetball facilities, that actually the state law allows racquetball as a separate, and you have to have at least five courts.
Somebody loves it. So you, you will address that?
But actually, not, I don't know how you tell the difference between racquetball and squash.
The long and short of that is that you would, you will address that at a future point with staff.
We would have to come in, see if you'd be open.
Separately, at a future point with staff.
That's...
Because you've gotta have food, et cetera, and really, the only concern with that parking being across the street was, you know, then you were gonna have people driving across the...
Oh, we would only want beer, it would be a beer and wine, just because that's part and parcel of essentially a, I would call a camaraderie type of atmosphere, maybe congenial. So it's all part and parcel of what we've seen. My client, Mr. Toll is here, who can take you through it in terms of his thinking and his goals, but that's up to you, given the, the hour, and knowing we're gonna come back. But he'd be happy to just give you his thoughts.
Sure, if he'd like to do that, or, I mean, if he's been sitting here, and those chairs are not comfortable.
No, I'd love the opportunity.
There we go. Thank you.
Just have to state, Michael, your name.
Great, thanks, John. Michael Toll, T-O-L-L-E. I'm actually a 20-year resident of Larchmont, so I would say it's similar in certain ways, different than others, the idea generated while living there. To the, I want to get direct to the point on the liquor, and I don't know if I mentioned this, John, of just stating clearly the lease term is, I've, I've got a 20-year lease on the property.
Okay.
The owner's been very cooperative in trying to, you know, help both himself and me to, you know, a mutually beneficial solution. So the objective in terms of today is to, to get open, and get open is the change of use, and the change of use is to table tennis. Ping pong is actually a trademark term.
I, we've got no issues with your change of use, it seems like a great idea.
Okay.
More, so, just a question of getting everything tidied up, we had a little concern about the across-the-street parking, if people, if alcohol was involved, but we'll deal with that if, if and when you get a liquor license. Probably the people couldn't get across the street, they shouldn't have been going in their cars anyway, but...
Is there a crosswalk right now?
No, the crosswalk's up, I think there's one on the corner, but they're not near the crosswalk where they are, so, there's low traffic in that section of Field Point Road late at night, so I'm not real concerned about that. And it's, it seems like a good use, I mean, doesn't everybody agree that table tennis is, that's, yeah, okay.
The only, sorry, well, the, the...
You should know, right?
Well, no, it's not, it's not, I'm not an avid table tennis player, believe it or not, I'm more into the social aspect of it. And there was some comments about ARC and Architectural Review and New England-y, and I think from a planning and zoning perspective, there's some New England-y aspects to it too, is that you have things available in your town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Larchmont, Larchmont lost its only movie theater, so, and that's...
Oh, really?
When we redo our train station, if you could come speak and tell them we want to keep our movie theater.
I absolutely will.
So you've got these comments from ARC, and you've got some landscape comments as well from Alexandra, which I think marry pretty well into what ARC is looking for, they're both looking for, she wants native species, ARC wants more planting. The ARC comments look like you could address them without the return?
We've actually submit, we, we've actually submitted...
Okay.
In fact, these are the updated plans, they don't change the floor area, the, there are floor plans, but the arch, but the landscape architectural plans show the, take this away, but, we have, we've added what the, ARC wanted us to add, which were...
Trees.
Which were trees along here.
Yep.
We have the trees along here and here. Matt Pop did this, so we'll be making this presentation, it's entirely consistent with what...
Okay, with conservation.
Here you go.
No, no, I'll let him up, yeah.
What, that's all, I'm, I'm about done on that, Pat, it's okay. They don't want to hear from me much more, I know, I know. And so, and then in terms of the Architecture Review Committee's comments regarding the, the elevation, the front elevation, our architect who's here, Ron Hone, actually, could describe to you, but again, I don't know if you need to hear it, what changes he made.
Unless you had a real issue with what they want with the windows and the entry door and...
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to meet them along the way. One thing you have to appreciate, you know, this is a reuse, and it's not exactly a reuse to Mr. Granoff's, you know, elegant office building, so we're still keeping the, I'll call warehousey kind of look, but, but modern. You were right on about the traffic, I was gonna say that on that street, one of the beauties is you do have a, you have an extra-long light, as probably everybody knows, because you go through four cycles, so, and you have another light up at the corner with railroad, so you really have a, you really have a modulation of the traffic there, so it's not like you're gonna, you see a constant traffic issue, that you have to be substantially concerned about the, the ability for people to cross, whether they've had a beer or, or not.
Yeah, okay.
Can you just tell me what the hours are and...
Well, I think the hours, yes, generally, and Michael could speak to that, but you're talking about the afternoons and the evenings, but Michael, why don't you just give them ideas also about the weekends?
Just very briefly, the benefit of having the two-story building is one floor will be more of a youth, let's say, recreational play, and then the thoughts in terms of the architecture and the layout, there's some accessibility issues with ADA accessibility to the first and second floors, but the point is that the second floor would be more towards the social aspect, higher-end floors, noise-canceling foams, finished walls, et cetera, for, that would, that would be geared more towards the evening. So if you ask about hours, it's really not all, both floors, all at the same time. I would say that to the youth players, you know, I, I'd, I'd love to work with the Boys and Girls Club, with the YMCA, with the school district, that's having, happening a lot in some different areas, and...
In other words, coordinating programming with them?
Absolutely, absolutely, you know, and, and if I can work with my accountant on, you know, working with, being able to discount to, to make it affordable to, you know, some of it's for profit, and some of it's at a discount, working with the, the different schools and chari, not charitable, but what's...
Groups.
SC301 seats, or whatever.
The YMCA...
Yeah, 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 some, someone, if I can char, if I can charge them $10 a table when the going rate's $20 or something. But the point is, yes, it's, it's, I would say, you know, we're talking in the 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM during the week, and then maybe it's later hours when we, you know...
Will you come back maybe to specify, I think, just, we'll just specify something to put into the, into, put into the record?
Yeah, well, I think, just to know, you know, given the location, you don't have, well, you know, I don't think this will just disrupt or harm anyone, so...
There's no, there's, I was trying to think what residential is, except for some of the residential in the upper floors of the, of the restaurants around there, there's minimal residential.
Certainly minimal residential, there is a cross on Prospect Street, Bell Manor, that's really not integrated, in fact, you've got the screening up from the natural area over here, which is just to the, to the, to the south of the Granoff parking lot in, in the Eversource transfer station, that's still, still there, so, I don't see it disruptive, but obviously, like anyone else, you'd like as much flexibility as possible, but the logic is, you're probably talking 10, 11 o'clock.
Okay, so we'll just set some hours of operation when you come back.
Okay, well...
So we will leave this item open?
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, so our next application is Sherwood Farm LLC, this is... I may have to go get some water. For a final site plan and special permit, I do...
How about me? I'm not sick.
I'm not sick either, this is from the heat. Yeah, yeah, oh, you mean, because it's got your germs?
No, no, yeah.
I don't care, you're not sick.
I'm not sick.
Okay, that's good.
And thank you.
Yeah.
It's, for our, four or five hours later, yes, this is the one we had up earlier this evening. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant, you saw this in June, and you approved the specialized nursery. What my client realized with starting to get the initial deliveries is that the driveway on the west side of the property does not have adequate sightlines. And it becomes an issue when you're having deliveries of commercial vehicles entering here. What we're proposing as part of this application is to install a driveway on the east side, which abuts the Merritt Parkway and Department of Transportation property, and to close this driveway off completely, so that all of the commercial deliveries will come in over here. The areas for the nursery stock remain the same in the, in this area of the site. The zoning enforcement officer had a question regarding the adequacy of meeting Section 6-142.2, and as you can read right here, it says shrubs and wall blocking the sight distance shall be removed to allow for proper sight distance. And what we're showing is the sight distance from each of the two remaining driveways, it would be at least 150 feet, which is what's required for this road, and therefore, we would ask for your approval. We, we have gone to the Health Department, and they're fine.
And the Health Department has signed off now.
They signed off. Actually have a red stamp that was signed. We went to Wetlands, and they said fine, engineering said fine.
And Jody had no comments, right?
Jody had only the comment on the sightlines, and that's what we addressed with the note that's already on the plan.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments on this?
And my client has waited all this time to see if you had any questions or comments.
And now he's hiding. Anybody have any questions or comments on this? Any comments from the public?
No.
Okay, so...
They can abandon us.
We will close this application then. And are you gonna do the library? There you go.
So, again, Tom Hegney for the applicant, this is Greenwich Library, and what we realized as part of my 7:30 weekly meetings at the library, is that the plan that we had approved, which calls for these columns to be installed for that overhang in front of the auditorium, which frankly, ARC didn't like at all, even though they approved them, we have a revised plan which brings, I didn't need to do that, which brings that window wall that exists that we've already bought as, replacing as part of our project, and moving it out 8 feet 5 inches, so that that overhang no longer is as it is, it is now without the columns, and it's a window wall.
You're filling in the loggia, in fact.
Yes. And there'll be about 10 inches more of overhang from what exists there now, and this would be what's referred to as a nano-wall, so that the glass panels could be brought back, and in good weather, you can expand either the courtyard or the lobby, depending on how you want to look at it, to allow for people to mingle in the courtyard before they go into a show in the theater. And this was something that we came upon as part of just standing out there at 8:00 Tuesday mornings and saying, you know, we really should do something better here. And the one thing that it does do is it allows for better circulation within the lobby, because oftentimes we'll have book signings, people put up their table and their chairs, people will be standing in line to get their books signed, and you don't have room to negotiate around that. And getting that extra 8 feet makes a big difference, it's 240 square feet, which is what brings us back here, because we're increasing square footage, but it's, it's space that we really weren't going to use as part of integrating the, the courtyard, and it is space that can be used 12 months a year rather than during just the seasons.
And from what you submitted, both HTC, you've gone back to both HTC as, you went back to HTC as well?
Right.
You have no...
We got a nice letter of support from Steve Bishop, is chair of the HTC, and ARC wants to see the details of the nano-wall, which I just received today.
What does a nano-wall do?
It's, it's a retractable wall, so it's a glass wall that can be retracted, so that you can have a large opening between the courtyard and the lobby at various times a year.
I'm not finding the ARC minutes, is that all that they asked you for?
We have to bring that back electronically, and then, we still haven't worked out the signage for the auditorium. The one thing that I, I did want to bring up, though, maybe, let's see, which one...
Mr. Hegney, how big, what is this total square footage of the lobby with this addition?
It's probably between 400 and 500 square, probably more around 500 square feet. There, and you really can't quite see it as part of this, but right above the entryway, the vestibule, we have an overhang that comes out, and we have letters on top of the overhang that say Greenwich Library. This will be the next major entrance from the parking lot, other than the main entrance that we have on the first floor. ARC liked this a great deal. I reviewed it with the zoning enforcement officer, and he said, he doesn't think that it meets Section 6-166A, which says, because I know you all have this right on the top of your minds, "No sign shall be located on the roof of any building or on any exterior wall so as to project above the top of said exterior wall at the location of the sign."
Well, does it apply to this?
Yes, because it's where it is.
Because this is not the roof of a building, this is the roof of an entrance.
That, that was my impression, that was the impression of ARC. They suggested that I bring it to you and ask for your opinion on it.
I interpret it differently. I do like the idea of it being there, but it, shouldn't it say something like auditorium?
Over on the side here, and maybe I can get a, a better...
Is it main theater or something?
Yeah, and over in this area, right where it says Call Auditorium, we will have a new panel over that, which will say Berkeley Theater.
If you, just above the canopy...
Yes, it's...
Same, in the same way?
It's, it's actually, right in this area here, it's, it says Call Auditorium, cut into the limestone above, and there'll be a panel that covers over that, which we have not yet finalized with the Berkeley family and our architect.
Two more questions.
If, yeah, I, I think that something about the space, as I experience it, it's all very nice, but I'd love it to be a, a little bit more inviting, and a, kind of a more inviting sign, I think is a good idea, so, anything that's very readable and so that...
Well, that's why we want to put it right above the...
Yeah, yeah, so anything that does that.
...canopy in front of the new vestibule, and as you can see, the roof is up here, so it's not sitting above the roof, which I think is the whole concern of the regulation itself.
So the signage there could be really good, especially if it's nicely lit, maybe?
It, it's halo-type lighting, so the, the letters have a rim around them, and then are backlit from there. So you get the, they're not, the letters themselves are not illuminated, just the light comes out around them.
And which is very good because you're approaching from above, so you'll see it directly.
Yeah, and that's one of the other things that we've been working on with the new layout of the courtyard itself. Lining the stairs up. These are two foot, five-foot wide stairs that are directly lined up with the entrance to the vestibule in the lower level.
Do you think that there's any value of putting some other additional signage where the stairs are?
No, I think by the time people get into the library, into the parking lot, they know where they're going. We don't see that as an issue at all. I would have had the architect and the library director here this evening, but I told them it was going to be late like it is. And the director has to be before the BET Budget Committee in the morning. And thought we could do this without the assistance of them.
No, it's really not.
Well, our first meeting at the library was pretty early this morning, so it starts getting late.
I wanted to ask you, I don't remember at the moment where lighting is in this space. Where is lighting at night?
Right, right now, there is very little. There's some underneath the canopy itself. But what we're proposing is to, as part of extending this out, have down lighting here underneath, and then four lamp posts along the landscaped area. This is a sitting wall. And then also having lighting as part of what the ARC requested within the railings on the stairs.
If you continued the, those lighting posts to either side of the stairs, does that help?
Yeah, we're going to have one here--
So it's very well lit?
--and then three others. One here, one here, and one here. We didn't have the light fixtures finalized at the time we were in front of ARC before, so we're taking that back to them with the signage.
Okay. If the, the light post were part of the entrance procession, so that it's, I'm just trying to think of these that are inviting. So things that are well-lit, some nice street furniture like light lamp, light posts are very welcoming. So if it's part of your axial understanding of the entrance, so there's a light post there, and then it continues around in an arc, it could be quite nice. I'm just trying to think of ideas that are inviting. And if you just have some kind of lighting strip that's like within the, you know, that's shining down on the steps, it may not have as dramatic an effect as having something that's--
We had shown something different, lighting shining down on the steps, and the Architecture Review Committee thought lighting the railings was better.
Okay. I've got to go to brass tacks.
Okay.
You got a comment from the sewer department that they're grumpy.
What Mr. Feminella sent over was a copy of what he had--
That you haven't addressed?
--included back in the spring. And the reason that we hadn't is because it hadn't yet been developed. I did get that this week and delivered that to his office. This is not a kitchen that we're going to have for the cafe. This is serving prepared foods.
So you're going to--
We have, we have a grease trap now.
Okay, so the problem is, Pat, that they, their sewer comments are that during the P&amp;Z phase, they want it, they want a resolution to issues they had raised in March that have not gotten a response.
Only because we didn't have the plans of the kitchen--
Given the fact that this is small enough and that we--
I'll just point out, and I, Mr. Hegney can correct me if I say wrong, it's just that these questions were not, these comments were not prior to P&amp;Z with the last application, but they've been elevated since it's been several months.
Right.
So I think Mr. Hegney submitting the material now obviously shows progress and--
Yeah, the problem, so the thing is, should we wait to have Rich be satisfied since he wasn't satisfied that he hadn't gotten his answers? Because everything else is fine. The only thing that's outstanding is the sewer comment.
And so, I mean, obviously, if the commission wants to wait for Mr. Feminella, we can, we could do that. Or if we want to make it, if we want to hold up the zoning permit on this until that's addressed, we could do that too.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we, if we give you the approval, but we'll hold up the zoning permit?
Yeah, that, that's fine. We're, just to give you where we are in construction, we've done all of the demolition and new steel--
Oh, so you're happy to just wait till we have sewer happy? We could do that too. We could leave it open.
And the auditorium, we're putting in the new ceiling and--
So what do you want to do? You want to leave it open and--
No. Go ahead, approve it. We'll handle it when we get the zoning permit sign off for the revised--
All right, okay. Any comments from the commission? Any comments from the public?
Mr. Toronto supports this application.
I know, I can't even see him. I didn't even notice. Okay, and so we'll close that. And with that, we'll close the public hearing. Okay. So our first thing. Anybody want to make the motion for Sherwood Farm? Any volunteers? No, okay. So-- Just let me check one thing. Pat, I have a comment here from yesterday about the three-foot on the fence, and I don't remember what that was.
That was the comment that Mr. Hegney read from the zoning enforcement officer about obstructions in the front yard setback and the--
So we only have to say that that will be addressed?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And that is the only thing that's outstanding, right?
I don't think there was any other comments from any other department that needed to be addressed.
All right. Okay, so I hereby move approval of this final site plan and special permit at 10 Sherwood Avenue. In so doing, the commission notes the Health Department approved on, on November 12th. IWWA has issued a green sheet dated September 13th. The zoning enforcement officer has noted the three-foot height limit on the fence. And there are no other outstanding staff or departmental comments at this time. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Greenwich Library. Sorry, it was a really long night and I blew through it. Okay. The, this is, I hereby move approval of a final site plan and special permit to add, how many square feet? 240 square feet of floor area to the Greenwich Library space. The commission notes that this further increases their FAR to a proposal of .581. However, the commission also notes that this building, this structure, has cultural and architectural merit in the community and is a significant element of our streetscape. And in so doing, has authorized the additional FAR. The commission also finds, notes that the HDC and the ARC have reviewed this proposal and supported. The applicant shall provide ARC with the details of the nano wall and shall return to ARC with the proposed signage and address all the signage issues. There was a tree question that I forgot to ask, but I think ARC is going to address it. I think there was a question with ARC that I forgot about, just--
The tree that died?
The tree, no, not the one. One is that we are aware that they're replaced. We are hoping, I think the commission can make a whereas, that we're hoping the tree that fell in the recent storm will be replaced. But also, there's a tree proposed in this.
In the, there was a concern, I--
There was a concern about the tree that's in the courtyard?
Yeah.
And did ARC raise that?
Yes.
Okay, so that ARC, the applicant, shall respond to ARC satisfaction on the courtyard tree? Because I don't remember exactly what it was, but I know we discussed it. They wanted a tree in the middle. And if you look at that middle space, no, no, we do want to do it. Yeah.
And then, do we want to make a motion about the interpretation of the signage regulation regarding signage on the roof?
The commission finds, the commission has found that the sign over the doorway is not on a roof, but rather over a doorway and is acceptable, subject to ARC's comments.
On the look, yeah, understood. It's accepted, yeah.
Okay.
He said it right.
And with that, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, don't stand up yet.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Hardman, I believe you have some motions. Hardman? You know, he's in the Army for five years. You give him a little small order and he fades.
I move, we approve the minutes in 26, October 1st and October 3rd, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Mr. Hardman, do you have a proposal on the ARC schedule?
Everyone's been provided a copy of the ARC schedule for 2020. The two meetings in 2021. I propose that we approve the ARC schedule for the upcoming--
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And last?
I hereby nominate Richard Hein for another three-year term on the Architectural--
Do I have a second?
H-E-I-N.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye, okay. He kept asking me how to spell it. I'm like, just say it and you don't have to know how to spell it.
I want to say, I want to say the poor one. I want to say Hein.
That's our representative.
Oh, here, Pat.
What do you have?
Here's the wetlands.
Thank you.
It's something someone mentioned.
No. Was there, was there an error?
Well, I mean, only commission member-- I don't know what it means. Have this, you type in a mister or missus, or a missus or doctor or something. We all need others.
So you, are you asking the honorary--
I pay no offense yet.
Do you know that there was a person who was on the commission that I will not make? It was before my time, which is hard to believe, who was the secretary. When she left the commission, she was so far behind in proofreading the minutes that there was something like three years of minutes took to accomplish. She looked at every single word of the minutes. All right, we survived another night.
We did. We did, we did.
Are we done?
We're done. And it's only 11:45 and we're not going to the scum. Or Jake House. And, wait, we don't see each other for a really long time now.
Pardon?
We're not seeing each other for no two weeks.
Don't we have a meeting on Saturday or something? We're meeting, if you want to come, we're meeting at 7:30 on Tuesday. No, don't invite them.
No, I don't want to come.
I know you don't.
We have to notice it.
Oh, we have to notice all of it.
It doesn't really happen. I, to Dennis's point-- To Dennis's point, we have to be able to get things done.
This is maybe a good time. What meeting?
Really?
Maybe we're near it. Let me turn it off. Oh, then I can turn it off. I don't know what you're saying, but I get it.